Good evening. At 7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Bailey, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Langness.
Present.
And Commissioner Girard.
Here.
We ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the September 12, 2018, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Did you get those, Bailey? Okay. Motion carries. So, the next item was a conditional use permit that's been withdrawn, correct, Donovan?
Correct.
So that way, if you're here for the conditional use application for Curtis Kier at 7739 North Shore Circle, that will not be presented this evening. We have three variances tonight, and they all have public hearings. So the way this will work this evening is that the city will present the data and the facts as they know them. Planning Commission members will then ask any clarification questions that they need. We will then ask if the applicant would like to say anything, if they missed anything or anything. And then we will hold the public hearing part. I'll give a little more direction at that point. We'll hear everybody, though, and at the end of the public hearing, when we close that, it'll come back for a decision by the Planning Commission. So that's how the next, number 7, 8, and 9 for the variances will work. So with that, the first variance application is for Katie Newman Lindstrom and Trevor Lindstrom, 21275 Iverson North. Again, it's a public hearing, and we're going to consider the variance application. Donovan, you're presenting.
Yes, sir. It's all yours. Chair members of Planning Commission. Can I get some video, please? I'd like to present the variance application for 21275 Iverson Avenue. It's shown on your screen. It's a shoreline property. Zeroing in here. It currently is the location of a single-family home. And the way it was built is shown from the aerial. The actual, the front yard is essentially a concrete yard. The variance is to locate a house addition, which would be a garage, 11.7 feet from the front property line. As shown on the existing condition survey, the property meets the side rear and front setbacks. The proposed addition is 18 by 20 to locate the garage here and improved entrance area. As part of the application, the applicants have proposed a pervious paved driveway out front and also infiltration areas in the front to reduce the impervious surface percentage, which currently stands at about 30, 49 percent, down to a little below 40 percent. We did receive a letter of support from the neighbor to the north. They've shown the drainage here. It appears not to, you know, have any, propose to have any impact on the neighbors. It's shown in the application. You'll have to, apologize for that. Bring it back up. The applicant did submit a kind of existing conditions. Well, first of all, they showed, you know, explained how much of that concrete yard would be converted to pavers as a pervious driveway. And then also submitted photos that show, you know, the front of the house and then proposed driveway appendage. And then just more, you know, housing elevations. And then how they would improve the front entranceway as well as, you know, just overall lot view and just something with a community character. There are many other structures, you know, this close or closer to the front lot line. The engineering review, basically, it was a consideration around the depth of the sanitary sewer out front. Right now, we don't believe that's an issue, but that will have to be, the depth will have to be determined, you know, based on, you know, a field visit. And the variance finds a fact. Don't raise any sort of alarms as far as impact to neighbors, neighboring properties or, you know, or, you know, is judged to be a reasonable use of the property. In staff's opinion, that the variance, if granted, will not have any adverse impacts on neighboring properties nor will diminish property values. There's a, there's three conditions of recommended approval for this application that involve that all concerns of the city engineer must be met. Previous paved driveway design must be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. And then also, the building permit must be obtained prior to initiation of any construction activities. At this point, I'm happy taking questions from the Planning Commission.
Commissioners, any question? Gary?
The garage that's on the next, it looks like it's the next door neighbors, but that has an entrance to the garage coming through that. How's that driveway going to be changed? How does that, what happens to that?
Yeah, the applicants don't propose any change of that. And they do recognize that, you know, access to that is really tight. And I think it does involve basically crossing over into the applicant's property. That's a situation that when they bought the house, I believe, last July, they understand that's, that's part of living there, that that's, and they have, don't have objections to that, and they don't plan to change that access at all.
But isn't that, isn't the pavement that goes toward that garage going to be taken up and replaced with pervious material?
Correct. I mean, it'll still be a drivable surface, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ness?
Very tight are the operative words here. There are the operative terms. I went out there and looked at this, and the difference between what they're proposing to do and what is, you know, the configuration to the north there is that their garage literally is on the property line and they're going, they would come in the end of it, you know, parallel to the street. The way this is proposed to be set up, we're going to essentially build a garage in front of this house that is only going to be a little less than 12 feet from the property line so that there's not, and the door is going to be on the side of that garage that faces Iverson. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
That means that they will not be able to park a car outside of that garage and keep it on their property. And I can tell you that that, from having driven back and forth through there, that that's the way it's going to be. There not, there is not room, there will not be room to park outside the garage unless they pull in parallel to the face of the garage, which I suppose they could do. I don't know if the intent, it's, you know, it's kind of hard to tell from the drawings if, do they plan to be, to pull in on the south side of the garage there in front of the house? I mean, was there any discussion about that? The other thing that concerns me, and then you can respond, is they're taking a chunk out of the inside of that garage so that there's only room for one regular-sized vehicle in that garage.
Yeah, let me address your concerns. The, well, the strongest thing I have to say against that is that there is a letter of support from that northern, northern neighbor who I, you know, would believe understands, you know, that there is not, there's still, you know, still, it doesn't impact their access directly, but I believe that the applicant is dealing with what they, you know, what they have as far as, you know, trying to get additional parking space. And if, if built, this would actually become a conforming lot as far as, you know, having two off-streets parking spaces and two enclosed. The way I see that, you know, this being 10 feet wide here does offer potential parking spot. You know, I don't think that, you're right, I think that potentially could do a parallel car there. But this, you know, this does offer that also additional parking. I think the applicant can probably speak to that more intelligently as far as
Sure.
what they thought of, because I found her to be a rather thorough individual.
Doesn't your, doesn't the narrative say that they're looking for two enclosed?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'd be curious to know how, I mean, if you look at the floor, look at the floor plan there, there's not room for two cars in that. I mean, a 20-foot-deep garage, first of all, is, is a very small garage.
It'll be double-depth.
There's an existing garage.
There's an existing garage here.
Okay, so that's where the two, okay, that, all right, I don't have any problem with that. I just assumed that they were talking about two more.
No, and they had considered, yeah, they considered a double front, you know, two wide, and that would be much more of an encroachment. And they, they chose this as kind of the, I think it's something of a Plan B.
That's fine. But you're not concerned about the fact that there's not room for a vehicle to pull up to that garage door facing the garage door without hanging out into the street?
I just don't think there's enough room. That really wouldn't be a viable parking space.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm just talking about the logistics of using that, that space in front of, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand how this is physically going to work.
Mm-hmm. I think the applicant could speak to that.
Okay.
Other questions?
Donovan, what, can you explain what the pavers that they're going to be putting in? Is it a special type of pavers or is it, they're just replacing the concrete with pavers?
Well, they're proposing pavers, and that is, you know, that's part of, you know, during redevelopment in these shoreline area lots, the applicant is required to, you know, make attempts to reduce the amount of impervious. And currently stands about 49 percent. So this one way to do it is the pervious paved driveway. There's a pervious policy adopted in 2011 by City Council that allows someone to get, you know, a property owner to get credit for that, you know, because there is, you know, this impervious surface maximum for lots. And so that will be reviewed by the, that design will be reviewed by the city engineer to make sure it's a viable design, will actually do what it's supposed to do, which is allow, you know, allow stormwater to percolate through the pavers.
I guess that's where I was going. It's a special type of paver unit that allows water to percolate into the ground?
Correct.
The sand base, I see.
Yeah, they do a sub base. Actually, we just approved one this, this week, so it's for another shoreline lot.
Donovan, I thought that the ordinance that was changed was only for commercial business. I didn't realize it was for residential as far as calculating impervious in that.
To date, we've only seen one pervious driveway installed within the city of Forest Lake, and mostly, I think it's because of the cost. But you can see them in certain places, like at Keys Cafe, for instance, there are pervious, you know, pavers.
Those are commercial.
It's commercial, and there's maintenance required, and the cost usually puts out, but I believe the cost is coming down, so we might see more things.
So it is allowed, and it's allowed as part of the calculation, what, we do a 50 percent calculation then?
Correct, you only get 50 percent credit.
Thank you.
One more question. Does the city remove snow on that property on the street? Is it snow removal, plowing with the city?
The city does plow that street, Giverston, yes.
All right. Other questions? Hearing none for now. Would the applicant like to speak? I'm not sure who the applicant is, but we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Katie Newman Lindstrom. Address is 21275 Iverson Avenue North. Subject property, here. So the first thing I wanted to address was the questions that Dennis brought. Donovan is correct. So it will be a double-deep garage. The intent would never be to park in front of the garage with the garage door shut. We would always have to pull in. It's not deep enough to have a car out. You could pull parallel to Iverson Avenue and have enough space, but that's probably unlikely that we would use that. So if you look up at the survey on this screen here, on the north side of the property, that teal area, there's a parking spot there. And then on the south side, there is also a section for a parking spot, so where Donovan's got the cursor right there. So there will be two off-street parking, not including that parallel parking spot, you know, to the road. So we wouldn't typically use that for that purpose. And as far as, let's see. I feel like there was another question there. Oh, the garage, so the neighbor to the north actually wrote a letter in support. It wasn't included in the packet, but certainly can get a copy of that. So that neighbor is the one who wrote the letter in support, and he actually has to access just a little bit of our driveway in order to get into his garage. And we certainly aren't going to do anything to impede his access to the property and his right to, to get into his garage.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? I have one quick one. Is there any kind of agreement between you and the applicant or your next-door neighbor to the north on being able to cross your property, anything? It's just a?
Not, no, not formally. We just acquired the property in June of this year, so he did not have anything writing, in writing. You know, he can technically get in and out of his garage without touching our property. He had some disputes with the prior owner of the home and had a tough time getting in there. But I understand that, you know, it's much easier for him to actually cross over the little corner.
Thank you.
She answered my question. Thanks. I was just going to ask you when she purchased the property.
Any other questions for Mike?
For the applicant. So you have not experienced a winter there?
No, not yet.
Situations like this do create problems for public works in terms of snow removal. I mean, it really is difficult for them to find places to put the snow, and I think this is just another situation where it's going to cause them problems.
Yeah, and I will say, I don't know if it'll help or hurt my case, but the garage to the north has a zero setback. It's on the road and...
Yeah, that doesn't help.
Yeah, you know, as far as, you've got a little bit of a curve there, so I guess it depends on what way the snowplow is coming and how it's going to act, you know, impact this. But at 12 feet, I can't imagine we're going to have any rollover that's going to hit the building, you know, the actual structure of the property.
It's probably a lucky thing that that garage is there because they'll go, they'll push the snow the other way and it won't be on your driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on which way and how nice the driver is.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just for clarification, the, and I'm going to say orchid because I can, or teal. The area that's, that's basically turns out to be between your driveway and the beginning of the driveway for the existing garage for your neighbor, that's, what material is that?
That will all be paver. So everything in that, that green teal color, that will all be converted to paver.
It'll all be pavers.
Yep, yep. So overall, the reduction, I think it's 8.9 percent, giving the 50 percent credit for the pavers. So right now, we're at 48.7, and we're going to go down to 39.8. And we really kind of baked that into this application as a mitigating factor because we realized that the property, it's a, it's a tight property. We only have 45 feet. But as the garage stands today, we can't even park our car in it. There's a bump out inside of the garage. Well, we can park a car in it, but you can't open the door because there's a bump out for utilities. So we've got some HVAC and our stack is running through that section of the garage. So in order to get out of the car, you have to get out, you know, a passenger would have to get out of the car before you pull it in all the way. So it's a very, very, very tight garage as it stands, but this will give us all additional space.
Other questions? Thank you. We may have more for you later.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. We ask that if you wish to speak to this application, that you step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving your thoughts. We will continue one after another until all who want to speak for this application have spoken, and then we will close the public hearing. So officially open to public hearing, does anyone wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for a decision. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I have another question for staff. Donovan, don't we have a five-foot minimum setback for driveways, and why wouldn't that apply here?
Well, this is a non-conforming situation, and we could require them to not, you know, not put it, not to put the driveway within five feet of the property line. In this case, it would disadvantage the neighbor from reaching their property line, I mean, Well, there's concrete there now, is that correct? Right.
So is it, what you're, what you're saying is then that this entire teal area, is it now concrete or asphalt or whatever base material it is?
I believe the entire, yeah, entirely is concrete.
So we're basically putting pavers over an area that's now impervious?
Correct.
Okay.
And something, you know, there's going to be some mulch, I believe, with it, kind of the...
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Questions, comments? I'm a little bit with Mike on this. I'd like to see them pavers be five feet in from the lot line to clean up a non-conformity. Down at the corner there, what the neighbor needs, I'm fine with a little encroachment there so he can get out of his driveway, but going up further towards the house and on the south side, I would say that we should hit the five-foot mark.
I think the problem with that, though, is then they're going to come off of the driveway in front of the garage, and 12 minus 5 doesn't leave a whole lot of room for a car to get into that portion of the driveway.
What dimension are you on here?
Driveway's not subject to the five feet.
Yep, but if we added the five feet on the, you're saying add the five feet on the southern end, right?
Yeah.
So then they would have to access where that 11.72 is. And so if you knock off five feet all the way down there, you're only left with six and a little bit to...
No, no, they, it looks like they're five at the house. I'm just saying, let's straighten that line out a little bit.
That southern line, just straighten that southern line out so it's...
Oh, I thought you meant five feet from the road.
Parallel.
No, 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 no. Five feet from that southern line.
Just make that southern edge there parallel to the property line.
Yeah, make sure we hit the five foot.
I don't see that's a disadvantage.
How about the northern side?
No.
There is that situation where the neighbor has to use the property.
However, up on the north end there, past the neighbor's driveway, we could bring it in there.
You couldn't bring it in there.
Make it as much conformity as we could would be my vote. It's my only concern on this project. Should we ask the applicant to come back and react to that? You understand what is being suggested?
Yep. So without having the exact property measurements, what I would be concerned about is we were really counting on that being our primary parking spot for the vehicle that isn't going to get stored in the garage full-time. So I'm not sure that that's going to give us the width that we would need in order to get a full vehicle in there.
The southern one?
Yep, in the southern spot.
You look wide enough at the top, that's why I'm, unless I got an odd angle here, but...
So the one at the top, I have, just for an example, on the very north side is a ivy wall and a fence of our neighbor's, and we have a Honda Civic that can fit in there. So I have it spray painted out the footprint of, of this improvement. And it's, it's less than a foot that I have on the passenger side, and I'm, I'm rubbing against his fence to get out of the car. So it's a very, very, very narrow spot on that, on that north side. So my husband's got a 3/4-ton truck. My husband's truck will not fit in that spot, so I'd be concerned that that south spot, if we cut out that five feet away from the property line, that I'm, I'm not going to have enough to actually have a parking spot there. And if, I don't know if this helps the situation, but I will say on that south line, that's a three-season cabin, and their primary parking spot is right on the fence line. So they have a car parked right there as well. It's kind of an informal driveway, but that's definitely where they park when they're up on the evening weekends.
On the south side of the property line?
That's south, the neighbor to the south, yep, yep. So where you're looking to have that five-foot setback from the property line, the neighbor has a car right there. There's a chain link fence, and the neighbor parks on the other side of that fence. I can't say for sure that that would, that we wouldn't have enough room without having the exact measurements of what that five foot would be. I know that we were, we are trying to close the angle out to have a little bit more of a triangle because the house is running at a different angle than the property line. So we were going to plant some flower gardens there. I'm just not sure that the full five feet would be sufficient to leave enough parking.
Are you going to give us a dimension of that area against the west property line there?
Do you know what the width is of that parking spot on the south side? I don't see it on mine, do you?
It's not on there.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
12, 14 feet?
Well, if you see, you see the distance from the corner of the proposed garage out to the Iverson property line there is just under 12 feet. If you swing that as an arc around, you can see it, it's just going to, it's just going to come just a little bit to the south of that 30-foot dimension there. So it looks to me like there's already 15 or 16 feet there.
Does that say 13, Siri?
Yeah, so it's 13 currently for that width, and...
And I should, it might be worth mentioning, too, that that would be our front sidewalk to access the front door as well.
So that's right along the south side of the garage addition, there's going to be a sidewalk there, is that what you're saying?
Not a sidewalk, yeah, it'll be paver, it'll, it'll still be part of the driveway surface, but if you have a parked car there, I don't want somebody, you know, the Girl Scouts selling the cookies to have to walk through the bushes to get to the front door.
So Donovan's got that five-foot mark here?
Yeah.
So if you take that and you go parallel with your lot line, you're well clear of it just a few feet. It's only this last couple of feet that's going, it's going to affect to hit that five, and the rest is going to hit probably eight or nine feet. You're probably about eight or nine.
Yep, yep. On that, on that top corner of the house, there's definitely space there. It's just once it goes down closer to the road.
So just at the street, bring that part up to five feet?
Yeah, I think that's all you got to do. Just a little bow in on the bottom.
You're already two feet.
Yeah, you're halfway, halfway there.
Does that make sense? Workable?
I'm not sure it's workable, but we can see when we get out there and look. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm asking for a variance approval, so if there has to be contingencies baked in the approval, I have to work within them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
As long as we have her up here. What is your intention on the north side? I mean, other than access for the neighbor's garage, what do you plan on using the extra space, the concrete or the pavers there for?
The pavers. We do have a third car right now, so we have an intern that lives with us that we typically provide a car for them to drive. That car's parked there. Long-term, I can't, I just, after we've been in this house now, I just can't see us having a car or having three vehicles in the, in the, in the property. We just don't have this space. So I envision that that car will go and it'll just be parking for visitors and when people come over. It's not big enough for even, for us to store our boat or anything like that.
That was my next question, is where would you store your boat?
You can't. There's nowhere to store the boat on the property. So we, it goes in the lake and then it... So we, it goes in the lake, and then it goes to off-site storage.
Very familiar with that. Any other questions? Hearing none, the chair's looking for a motion. I'd make a motion to approve variance, to place a home 12 feet from the front property line and 9.7 feet from the property line at 22798 Henna Avenue, with the four staff recommendations and a fifth on the south side to meet the five-foot setback.
I think you gave the wrong address.
Don't think so.
She lives on Iverson.
Oops.
Be looking at the next one.
Excuse me, you know, see, that's why you guys sit here, to correct my stupidity. So if we could strike that, and let's try approval of the variance of Loke House Edition, 11.7 feet from the front property line at 21275 Iverson Avenue North, with the following three conditions, and add a fourth that would comply with a five-foot setback for the driveway on the south side.
I would second that.
We have a motion, second, any discussion on the motion?
I do. I'm still concerned about that north side. You know, you talk about conforming and bringing the south side into conforming, I guess I'm not sure why we would allow the north side to not be.
Valid argument.
I mean, you know, we're gonna have a number of these, and we have one later today that's gonna deal with this very same issue. I mean, why wouldn't we not ever remove the, at least the extra concrete from where that garage ends back to reduce, number one, the impervious, as well as bring it into conforming a little bit?
I'm a little indifferent on it. I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting the five-foot condition on it, but I could support it as staff recommended as well. I think the difference between this and another proposal we have later is we have existing concrete here, and so all of this concrete is gonna be an improvement for water quality with the pavers put in there. I don't know, to me, it seems like a reasonable application, but I'm, I'll certainly support other members that might want to put five foot on the south side. I think adding that onto the north side would create a lot of difficulty for this particular homeowner with conditions that they have already today.
Other comments?
I guess I, I would echo that, I, you know, if this was, you know, if it was impervious surface that was being put down, I would, I would want to minimize that, but I would, I would support this as long as that is a pervious type of application there. One of the things that you might wanna consider is instead of doing pavers beyond the edge of the garage there is doing this, I call it grass, grass parking, but they, you have to support it, and there's a, either metal or plastic grid that goes down in it, and you can grow grass on it and, and still park on it without it, the tire sinking in. And that might be something that you wanna consider for that trapazoid there that's just north of the garage, if it's just a temporary thing.
Other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion, all those in favor signal by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is a variance application by Jeremiah Overby and Sarah Simpson for 22798 Henna Avenue North. Again, we have a public hearing to consider the variance application. Donovan, you're presenting.
Yes, sir.
It's all yours.
Okay. This, this property is currently vacant, and there's not a fixed address for it. It's just, it's located just north of the North Shore Circle Peninsula, at the end of Henna, as shown on your screen. It's, these lots consolidated. The, yeah, the. Sorry, my Adobe fails me. Existing condition survey, I should say, the proposed survey first submitted to the city for the variance request, you know, was, you know, to place the home 5.9 feet from the front lot line and 11.1 feet from the rear lot line. What we came to as the variance request, after I had some discussions with the applicant, Jeremiah Overby, who's here representing the application, is that the request is for, to locate the home 12 feet from the front setback and 9.7 feet from the rear setback. The need for the house to be located kind of diagonally across the lot is that there's something of a, of a swale that currently goes through the, much of the building envelope. It's shown here in the drainage plan that's submitted, how the water flows currently across, well, it's the proposed drainage, but it flowed across here into a culvert and then underneath the cul-de-sac at the end of Henna Avenue. Currently, the homes, you know, north on Henna, as shown here, are within the building envelope, where these conditions don't exist. And currently below that, it's rather a steep slope to the south. And what this proposal is to, to actually, this is something of a berm along here, and that to dig that out for the construction of the house and place that material to be the driveway, install a culvert to allow the water still to flow through. And the applicant reports that, you know, if building the house this way allows him not to have to import 1,200 cubic yards of soil onto the property. This, you know, property is somewhat remote, it's, you know, the nearest houses are, I believe it's 60 feet and 130 feet from the proposed house location. The house itself is a walkout, is shown here in kind of that V, V form. Showing on your screen now is photo that does show something of the depression. Here is Henna Avenue, right here, so this is looking east, and this is that berm I mentioned. The house is located in a single-family zoning district where those front and rear setbacks are 30 feet. And the city engineer did review the drainage plan and had some, some comments that would need to be addressed prior to issuing a building permit. The applicant did note that if the house was gonna be built within the building envelope, but considerable number of, more trees would have to be removed for that construction. And also, there is, you're currently, to the south, the owner owns these lots, and then it's also currently vacant to the west. In a way that the property is, is located, I'll go back to the, to the aerial here, that, you know, if this property was ever developed, it's likely to be a cul-de-sac and there would be rear yards, and so actually this property, you know, with the cul-de-sac street, would there be rear yards, and because of a steep slope here, probably no house within close proximity to this, to that rear lot line of the subject property. And so that, in the fines of fact, staff doesn't have any strong considerations, you know, against recommending this. And the, the conditions of recommendation do include, any concerns the city engineer must be met prior to construction, building permit must be obtained, any required Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Washa District permits must be obtained, and that the construction activities will not adversely impact the wetlands, which are approximately, I think a little over 30 feet from the proposed, you know, house footprint. At this point, I'm happy to take questions from the planning commission.
Any questions here?
Donovan, the property across the street, and the diagram you have up on the screen right now is fitting well, it has that, that bump out that looks like there's a cul-de-sac or something that's planned there at some point in time. I presume because going south of there, that road is into that neighborhood that will never get built, 'cause it's a giant swamp or whatever. Did our city engineer take into any consideration whether that cul-de-sac could actually be built to standards with the house as settled on the property?
He didn't comment on that, you know, basically it was related, comments related to drainage. That does kind of just, you know, peter out into, into just kind of a driveway, there really is not much of a turnaround area. And, you know, this, yeah, this aerial doesn't show anything much better. But, I mean, I think, you know, as assessment policy goes, it would be, you know, a resident cost to improve that, and I don't think we can get consensus on residents to improve that. And so far, I haven't heard any complaints from Public Works as far as, you know, plow truck turnaround or anything related to that. So, I mean, I don't think, there's currently any staff concern with that, you know, the proximity of the proposed house.
I guess, I guess my question is then, I presume the 22785 home across the street, we required that portion of that piece of property to be taken at some point in time for that purpose? I don't know why else we would have that odd cut out there. And so I'm wondering why we wouldn't include that at this time, for some point down the road, when we wanna actually build that to standards?
You make a good point, having considered that.
Isn't that a turnaround at the end of that?
Not really.
Not fully?
I did. But. Yeah, I mean, I guess we could look at the.
Google Street View has it, if you wanna pull it up on there.
Well, I mean, if it ever was constructed, I believe it would be constructed, you know, as a bulb, kind of more, you know, filling out this side than actually encroaching to the west. You said, is it Google or Bing that you like for that one?
I pulled it up on Google while I was sitting here, and it worked on, on that. I'm not opposed to Bing, though, either.
I did go back there, while he's looking for this, I did go back there and take a look at that, and that's not really a turnaround back there, although you can turn around, but you need to be extremely careful. Because it would be very easy to get stuck back there, particularly with the weather it is, as it is right now. But, I mean, this, this, there's no question about the fact that this is the end of the road there, 'cause that just drops off there. I, I don't mean to be picky, it doesn't have anything to do with the application, but it doesn't look to me like this survey here is 100% accurate. It looks to me like there, like there's a drop-off, and then there's a shelf, and then it goes, it's relatively flat, then it drops off again, and that doesn't show up on this survey here, these survey, these contours are all uniformly, like it's just a bank going basically uniformly down, and it does not do that.
Well, I mean, here's the berm, you know, here's looking, looking west at the property, here's the berm I was referring to, and this is the, basically this is the project of difficulty that the applicant faces is to, the building, a lot of the building envelope is here, and he's, in my discussions with him, he has noted that it does appear that the, the spot elevations on the survey don't really underestimate that difference in grade.
I just, I'm not, I'm not picking at that, I'm, I would support this, this variance, because this is a, it's an unusual lot, and it, you know, clearly the, the topography of that lot goes diagonally across the lots there, and so, I mean, this is the most logical and would be the nicest way to put a home in there. I am not sure that it needs to be quite that close to the, the extension of the street right of way there, but it, I don't have a problem with it, because I do think it is the end of the line. I think if they ever, if the city ever did decide to build a cul-de-sac in there, it could be built, you know, in the, in the shape of a golf club driver, you know, and just, just circle around to one side, you know, and not have to encroach on this property on the, on the, on the west there.
Mike?
Well, since it's a new home going in, I, I've seen the pictures, and I'm wondering, can't they just move it at a little bit of an angle, you know, like four feet this way, and now you're, you're more than nine feet off of one side and 10 feet off the other, and, you know, you're, just turn it a little bit and you're within the specs? I mean, it's a new house, it hasn't been built yet, and you got a berm, you're gonna bring that dirt, and, I mean, a big driveway on the, on the, on the end there, and, I don't know, I just don't see, I see, take, maybe make the driveway just a tad bit smaller and just twist that a little bit, and you're in.
I've, I've looked at it myself also, Mike, and I don't know why he couldn't turn that, the, the garage is the flat part of the elevation, the house is the walkout side, and the garage belongs on that, on that upper north, north side, the flat end, and I don't know why he couldn't turn that a little bit and be within the building setback. The other, the question I have is where's the south property line here?
It runs, it runs far.
It runs far.
Yeah, these are, there's a lots that, at one point were, you know, they were platted, and, and then at some point consolidated, and so, you know, this applicant, the owner, owners own, you know, basically all these.
Okay, so I understand, we, we've, we've got wetlands to consider here, but what he's shown on his site plan is a building envelope that's south line, isn't really, that's his definition of the building envelope.
Well, that's, they did approximate wetland edge, and so that's, and they're staying 20 feet off that, so that's, that's where.
So there has been a wetland delineation done?
There's not been a delineation done, and none required, because they're not proposing any impacts.
Well, you don't know that unless there's a delineation done.
Correct, but what I found with surveys is that, you know, they, they do with the rough, you know, looking, look at the vegetation and do a wetland line.
Has the applicant submitted a grading plan?
There is a, not a formal grading plan, and we generally don't have those unless it's, unless it's, you know, part of a subdivision, and so what we do require is a drainage plan reviewed by the city engineer, and that's what we have, you know, we have, and that's where in the engineer comments, he does talk about the need for, you know, further information, and, you know, some requirements regarding grading limits and.
But the whole reason that the applicant's asking for a variance here is because of topography and to save trees and drainage, and I think the only way to really analyze that is to see what the, what the grading plan shows. I, I'm not convinced that he can't turn that a little bit, be within the building setbacks, and not have any more impact on grading, and not have any more tree removal than what he's gonna do out there with this plan. That's my feeling. Dennis?
I've looked at the plan, I mean, this is a nice lot, it's a, it's a fun lot, it's kind of like, you know, I would look for it, because it's got the topography and huge, huge potential for view and that sort of thing. But the easiest way to make this house fit on this site would be to tighten up the knuckle, would be to, you know, it's a fairly wide angle, and just make that less of an angle, it actually would, I think, would help him.
and just make that less of an angle. It actually would, I think, would help him, that way he'd be able to put the house, the house portion of it, exactly the way that he wants to, to get his best view, and it would just, you'd just rotate the garage about the knuckle back around to the, you know, in a clockwise direction. It would have almost no impact on the square footage of the house, or, I mean, if this is indeed, if this is indeed the floor plan of the house, it would have minimal impact on the overall square footage of the house, and I think that it could be made, I'm not saying, and I don't, I don't personally need thirty feet front and back, but we could get it to be more than what it is, and I don't think it would, would be detrimental to the, you know, putting a house on this, on this property in the ideal location, which I would want to do if I was the owner.
Other comments? Would the applicant like to say a few words? I don't know if the applicant's here. We ask you please state your name and address for the record.
Jeremiah Overby, 19775 Erskine Street, Wyoming, Minnesota. On some of the questions, if I may, for bending the house a little bit more, we're at a thirty-degree angle right now, and I agree with that, we could bring the garage a little bit closer, be parallel with Henna. In doing so, I have three mature trees that I'm trying to save on that corner, and the reason for the whole house where it is is to save every mature tree on that property and be as least invasive to that north neighbor, if that is north, I forgive, as possible. Because their house is built really close to their property line, they actually had to move it because of where they placed their well. So they're only fifteen feet off of their property lines where their deck is. So any more that I move that house close, closer to that Lot 28 line, they'll be looking right off their deck into the side of my garage. So that's kind of why everywhere that this house has been located has brought in all of those different questions. Moving the house clockwise, the whole house clockwise, I get close to the wetland line, and I have to bring in fill for the front. That swale on the survey says it's only four feet. I've got a lifted F-350, and I can see right over in that swale. So I meet my survey guy there tomorrow, depending on how this goes, to get the real spot elevations for the whole property. As I have right now is just the lot lines and slight elevations, until I have to pay him another two grand to give me spot elevations. So I'm trying to save a little bit in my pocket, but...
Questions for the applicant?
Mike?
Okay, you say you can't move that on that, towards Lot 28 because of the mature trees.
Yeah.
But you're putting in a huge driveway there. We're not saying move it north, we're saying just move it at an angle. You're just cutting into your driveway, making your driveway just a tad bit smaller. You're not going anywhere near those mature trees.
Okay, no, I agree with you. If we went from...
That way, you take that off the backside where it's only nine feet, or, what's that off the back?
I think that was five, wasn't it?
Twelve.
Nine.
Nine-seven.
Nine-seven, yeah. Instead of nine-seven, yeah, then you can move that back off there a little bit, but you're cutting into your driveway a little bit. That's all I meant when I said, just move that part in, and then on the other end, you know, just shorten it up a little bit, just to get your, in the boundaries.
No questions at this time?
Sure would have been nice to see those, the actual location of those trees.
Do you have a visual of that, Donovan? I can, not, you know, I just have, can show you canopy. The Street View, might give you some.
So would your driveway be going in up right close to that mailbox?
Yes, it would come, it would come right next to that mailbox.
So what?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, what are the mature trees that you want to save? Because most of them there, to me, look like they're at an angle, and they don't look that nice.
So if you, the canopy on the lot is beautiful. If you want to rotate to the left a little bit, Donovan, straight ahead, you see that double tree kind of right above, come, I'd like to try to save, I think, that one that you're on. Come back down one, that tree, I'm going to save, and then to the left, and then go back, one up, straight up the screen, to the left again, left one tree, down, right, kind of right there. That's going to be on the inside of my driveway, in between, that'll be the tree in the front yard. And the more that, the more that I turn everything, that would bring the driveway into that tree on stall number one, right next to the house. And these are all, until I get survey out there with my meeting tomorrow, we're going to move that house as much as we can. We'll lay out all the trees and see where I can save the trees and what trees I have to take. Right now, I have to take seven mature trees, and I got to keep eleven of them.
When do you desire to build?
I want to break ground this fall. If I get approval and get the permit within a week, I'd like to break ground.
Yes, sir.
I really got mixed feelings on this. I, you know, I, it is a beautiful lot, and it's a beautiful area, and appreciate you investing in the community, building a nice home in the community, but we're dealing with a brand-new lot. I mean, it's a lot that has a pretty large building envelope, and quite frankly, we're going to remove trees on this site, no matter what we do. We're taking trees out, and we're going to be filling. We're going to change the landscape, but it's going to look great when he's done. It is going to be nice. But I just have a trouble approving a variance for a lot that's right now vacant. I don't think we've gone far enough to investigate uniqueness of the lot, and demonstrated to me how he's going to continue to work within that uniqueness, save trees, work with the drainage, and justify his variance. I'm not seeing it. And maybe we need to do more investigation, maybe we need more information, but right now, as I'm looking at it, we're dealing with a lot that's very buildable, it's got lots of room, and we're asking for a variance, and it's, and yes, it's a unique lot, it's at the end of the road, there's wetlands around it, it will be beautiful, but I'm having trouble. I still have the public to hear from. Let's see what happens. Anybody else comments?
I guess, I'm looking at the picture, the diagram with your driveway in there.
Yep.
And there's going to be a tree on the south side of that driveway.
Correct.
Well, what I was saying is just that portion of the house, that twisted, the driveway's going to stay exactly the same. The driveway's not going to move, only it's just going to be a little shorter on the top end, you know, so instead of your house at an angle this way, now it's going to be there, just the top part.
Okay.
That's all I meant. So it's not going to change any trees.
And I'm not against any, any way that I have to move this house. I'm walking into this fully, especially with tomorrow and the survey.
I know you already have diagrams and...
And getting all that in, I know I'm going to have to move this house. It's just, what do I have to do? Because I do, I have every option right now to do, to make this fit. And if I do have to, my architect, he's on the phone call for tomorrow too, if we got to move it, we're going to move it. If I have to, you know, cut off a garage, I got to cut off a garage stall, and then I'll put another outbuilding, but whatever I can do to, you know, build on this property.
Mr. Chairman, I, if we, if you assume that the point, the inside of the elbow, and the way the driveway comes down there, if you assume that the west point of that triangle form there stays exactly where it is, you should be able to protect a tree that's right, it's my understanding, if you've described this correctly to me, there's a tree right in that triangle right there that you want to save. And I still don't see why you can't tighten that up just a little bit. I'm not saying make it a right angle, but you could, five, maybe seven or eight degrees, and then push the house to the west. What you would be able to do is push the house to the west, and that would give us a little bit more space on the east side, and I'm not concerned particularly about the backside because I don't think anything is ever going to happen back there, but I am concerned about that east property line there. And I think you could do that if, if that, and I would encourage you to explore that with your surveyor and your architect. I think it can, I think what these guys are asking for here can be accomplished, and you can save your trees and fit the same square footage of house on that site. It just needs to be, I think, a little bit different shape, a little tighter bend in the elbow there.
All right, gentlemen, I need to hold a public hearing, so thank you for your, we may have more questions for you. This is a public hearing. We ask if you'd like to speak to this application, to please step forward, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes telling your thoughts on this application. We will listen to everyone who wishes to speak. So officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the issue?
Gentlemen, my name's Scott Manny. I live at 22830 Henna Avenue North, the property north of this. And I was wondering if you could go to the one with the picture. And this is only, it's my concern and our neighbors' concern that we just like to make sure everybody gets addressed. It's water. Do you mean the aerial, the aerial photo? That, no, the one on the street where you can see the mailbox? The Google. The Google. Yeah. Because if you look, there's a one-inch, there are one-foot drainage pipe that follows Henna, and that's nine houses down, and the endpoint is that swale. But that's not the one that worries me, it's the one on, if you go on the west side of all our houses, it comes down, and then it bends around the swale, you see, and it ends right at that point. And my concern is with where that driveway is going to be located. I haven't seen or heard any of the engineers say where that water's going to go, or how they can drain that thing properly. Because if it drains, it's going to drain back on my property. Because if you look, when we were out there when that nasty rain was a week or two ago, it was wet, there's standing water there, and that's the way the swale is now. So I just want to make sure that every, the due diligence is done, so when that water comes from that entire area, it doesn't back up on my property.
Did you say there's a pipe in, behind your homes also?
No, but if you look at the elevation...
Oh, just the elevation.
The elevation, there's a pipe in the front that runs all the way next to the road, but the elevation is it gets, it drains down into the, and then comes into that swale.
Okay.
So the hard part is that water comes around on the backside, it has nowhere to go once it gets to where that driveway is going to be. So hopefully, if it's done right and culverted right, it'll get back through there. But that's a risk I don't want to take, knowing going into a new construction.
Donovan, don't you have a modified grading plan that you can show here, to kind of show where, the one that shows in blue the driveway and the drainage? Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, and what the, you know, part of the city engineers, to address your concern, one of the engineers' comments is that the emergency overflow place needs to be identified, so that if there's even overflow on this property, that it goes somewhere else, and so it's not even going to even reach your property, is the point.
Okay, because right now, you can see the one on the west side, the arrow's coming around.
This one?
That...
Oh, you mean here?
Yeah, that's the water I'm worried about coming down that way around the property. The other one is piped, so it's pretty much a straight line right down, parallel to Henna Avenue, but all the water from the entire development comes down and around that way. And if it's going to go into one, one-foot or two-foot drainage under the driveway into that swale, can I handle it?
I mean, I just want to make sure I understand, this pipe that's coming down the east side of that property, are there, what are there, inlets along that, or where does that initiate? Where does that come from?
It's culverts under the driveways. You know what I mean?
So you're saying there's just a swale, there isn't necessarily a continuous pipe?
No, it's, I remember when I had to redo my driveway, we had to cut that pipe down deeper to get it to grade.
Okay, so it's the culverts on, there's a swale that goes all the way.
Yep, sorry, I didn't mean there is a direct pipe, but yeah, it's the swale cut through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one more time. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commissioners for a decision. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Gary? Donovan, would you clarify where the water is going now, when it's draining? Is it, and you can't see where I'm pointing, but is it going to the area right there where you have the...
Yeah, I believe it's coming here, you know, as, you know, as the neighbor described, you know, it's coming through here, and then, you know, there is currently a pipe culvert that comes underneath the road here. Here's the sanitary sewer mat hole.
So there's an inlet where if you move your cursor over to the right, there's a culvert there, or an inlet right there?
Yeah, yeah, it's shown on the, as seen on the survey, you can see that. That's where the stormwater currently goes, as it flows across the lot, you know, and from the swales and culverts.
So that inlet is going to be right where the driveway is, is that right next to the driveway?
No, no, the driveway's here.
Down here.
And so the inlet's here, and what he's, what he has is a fifteen-inch diameter pipe here, which is the city minimum, and that's, you know, whenever, any swale, you know, any culvert for a driveway needs to be fifteen, is minimum size fifteen inches, so that's pretty universal throughout the city, and that does accommodate flows throughout the city.
So basically, it's matching the culvert that goes across, under the road?
Yeah, and so, I mean, water's coming here and then also from here, so it's...
Yeah, but the culvert that's going under the road currently is fifteen-inch also?
Yes.
So it's one and the same?
Right.
So we're not, it's not decreasing the amount of water flow that was already there now?
It's, you know, it's not decreasing capacity.
Right.
I mean, there's a pipe, and then, I mean, obviously, if you're putting a pipe in, you want to make sure that if, for some reason, it becomes plugged, there isn't emergency overflow, and that's where, you know, in Ryan's comments, that, you know, a, there must be an emergency EOF, emergency overflow, that's, that would be on the northeast side of the house to review, in case the driveway culvert becomes plugged.
Want to ask what them other blue circles are, then?
Those are proposed spot elevations, and, you know, part of a drainage plan is that you want to have descending numbers as, you know, going downhill, of course.
Correct.
To show, I mean, show the final, to Commissioner Black's point, you know, to show where the final grade will be to allow for this water to flow to where it should go.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if we can wordsmith a motion to approve this subject to minimizing the variance, or, yeah, the variance is needed, and encouraging handling the drainage and minimizing the amount of trees to be, or saving the mature trees as we could, I guess I can work with, with the commission and do it. It is a unique lot, it's a very unique lot, it's at the end of the road. The road is not going to go through in the future. It will be a beautiful spot to build a home. It just seems, it's too bad we don't have more time. Here we are in October, the gentleman wants to begin building right away, and I understand. It's, our construction season's so short here in Minnesota, and to get work going, it's times of wasting, and I want to cooperate with the applicant, but I, it's just too bad we don't have more time to really study this lot and to look at it a little bit closer, and that we didn't have more information on spot elevations, trees, and grading plan. I mean, if, I would just encourage staff to work with the applicant as much as possible to adjust the envelope of the building within the normal setback standards, and I guess I'm, I'm on board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to agree with Mike in that respect, and to restrict the movement of that garage area to save one tree, I would hesitate suggesting that that's a good idea. A lot of times, if you're constructing around the tree, it's going to die anyway in a short time, is kind of my experience. So to make a big restriction because of one tree, I think that would be foolish at this point. So if that garage can be tweaked, whether you lose a tree or not lose a tree, I think that, that getting closer to the accurate necessity for the... that, that getting closer to the accurate necessity for the lot line clearance is important.
Well, I, I think that's all good and well, but I think we need a little more direction on how far we're willing to give the variance out. I think a little nebulous to work with the city is putting a lot on Donovan, I think we should give a little direction if we want a minimum of, or Donovan, you comfortable with them? Maybe I'm putting words in your mouth.
Yeah, I think it's, it's within the, the planning commission's purview to actually to identify the building envelope, to set, you know, the parameters with feet, you know, and if it's simply the, the rear setback you're concerned about, you know, provide a number in which to, to guide the applicant to, you know, where you think there's a reasonable use of the property still maintained, and, you know, city interests are preserved.
The problem with doing that, when you don't have, when you're not confident with exact figures, is, is hard to do, though. If, if some of the elevations are going to change tomorrow when there's a new survey or whatever, maybe that doesn't make any difference.
Yes, sir.
If he just tweaks the house and it fits within the property line without the variance, he just applies for his permit and he starts construction, right?
That is correct.
I mean, I, I guess, I don't know why we'd even consider this variance, and he should just tweak the house and get a new survey and start building, is my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I've worked with these things, and I, I, I think that would be a little bit harsh in this particular case right here, although I do think it can be improved on what it would be, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this, but I want the, I want that front setback, or the east, the, the setback from the east property line to be a minimum of 15 feet, change that from 12 feet to 15 feet. I, I believe that can be done, and it won't have any adverse impact on that tree in the front yard there.
Anything on the rear setback?
No, well, whatever they're, whatever they asked for, what is that?
9.7.
9.7.
So we have a motion to approve the variance with the four recommendations, and a fifth of the dimension, or east line dimension, no less than 15 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
I would second-
Second?
Second that.
Discussion?
What's-
Well, we got a slew of them here, so let's start at the end.
I, I'm fine with that motion, otherwise, I'd like to add in there, too, that they meet the, the, all the drainage concerns, because the, all the drain, all the drainage in this whole development is coming into this one yard. So I think they should meet all the drainage. I don't, I don't know with magic marker markings on this, if that's, if those are good or up to par or whatever, but I think it's the last house on the road, and if all the water's going to be there, I think they should be able to show that they're going to meet whatever the drainage needs, to the neighbor's concerns.
That's all for me. Eric?
I guess I kind of have an opposite view than the motion is setting, I'm less concerned about the front setback being at 12, because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, and that 12-foot setback is almost, in regards to a road that's never going to be built there. So to me, that, that, that's the acceptable one. The, the rear setback, I, the property to the west of that certainly could be developed, my understanding is it was actually plotted to be a development at one point. I know that the, the landowner of that property actually had reached out to me and said that at some point in time, they do want to develop that. So it wouldn't surprise me if changing the rear setback could actually negatively affect that property at some point, because even if it's closer to the property line, it's still, and, and even with the odd topography there, it's still, then makes that next person move their house further, similar to the guy's deck to the north. And I, I think that's an easily mitigated piece in this one, is the rear setback, just moving that house, so it shifts, I think there's a number of ways to do it, and saving the trees and all the other concerns, so I wouldn't support the motion as it's written, but if it was essentially reversed for those reasons, I can go with the front setback, but I'm not a real big fan of this rear one.
Again, I, I took the scale drawing of the building envelope and twisted the whole thing, and put it within the building setbacks, and it fits. It's going, going to have some impact on trees, it's going to have some impact on the topography, it may not work out quite as well with the walkout situation, they would have to do some more grading, but it fits. And with what Eric says, and with the, the motion we have on the floor, you know, maybe the compromise is 15 feet on both sides, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking to try to move this thing ahead for the guy, and maybe if we just say a minimum 15-foot setback at the front and back, and that that be a minimum, and that in working with staff, if they can make it even better, let's do it. So that's, I guess I would, I'm looking to, I'm looking to move it ahead.
Okay. Do you have anything profound? Well, it doesn't have to be profound.
I'm done with profound. I would agree with Mike, I think I would support that motion more than I would support the, support the motion that's on the table now. Me, too.
I got no problem.
Dennis, would you like to amend your motion?
I got no problem making it 15 feet on both sides.
Would this, who second that?
I would second that, too.
So modify the motion so that the last condition is that both the east and the west setback need to be 15 feet?
Yes.
Donovan, those were the only two requests as part of the variance, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
My, my only other request, Dennis, would be to, to Eric's point, is that to make sure that this drainage, you know, Forest Lake's a drainage haven.
Well, I guess I assumed that this condition, oh, back to the conditions here, and this condition that it meet the, the wetland, the, or the watershed district requirements, where we got here, all required permits from, from the Comfort Lake, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District must be obtained prior to the initiation of construction activities. I can tell you that one of their requirements is going to be that they can't flow water off this site onto other people's property, and they can't flow water off this site any faster than, than it currently does.
If I could offer a correction there, Commissioner Addy, the, the sediment erosion control permit would probably be required from the watershed district for this property, for this construction, but not a stormwater permit, so they wouldn't comment on that. I do believe that, you know, requiring a extra drainage, you know, plan approval, I mean, I believe any concern with drainage are already met with the, you know, the condition that all comments and concerns of city engineer shall be met. I can relate to him, you know, the testimonial from this evening.
I mean, I guess I felt like that it was covered with the condition that, I mean, the guy doesn't want to build up a house and a driveway that's going to back up and, and cause, you know, first flooding on his property and then on the neighbor's property, I got to believe that some common sense is going to come into play there.
Other comments? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Extension? Next is a variant application for Gerald and Donna Peterson, 21240 Fonden Avenue North, this will have a public hearing to consider the variance application. Donovan, I assume you're presenting?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to present the, the variance application for Mr. Jerry Peterson for 21240 Fonden Avenue. Currently on the site, there is a cabin with a shed and a detached garage that's located rather close to the, the street. The, all three of these, you know, current structures are non-conforming. What Mr. Peterson proposes, and his builder, Mr. Mark Hall, is here also to represent the application, is a, is a walkout structure, meeting the, both the lake and side setbacks, however, a 13.1-foot variance, a variance requested to place the home 13.1 feet from the front property line. The, you know, as shown in the, you know, proposed condition survey, is a, you know, attached garage, somewhat minimal building footprint, and also some retaining walls to keep the slope on this rather, you know, steely slope site. And then the, also like to, well, we have received a number of letters of support for this application. The, does propose a, a single-family use for this, for the, for the redevelopment of the property, and he proposes it as a retirement home for him and his wife, and I mention that because if you look at the actual, the, the building footprint, basically, it's shown in this dash line, and that itself doesn't even allow for a, you know, a home, unless you go multiple levels, that would meet city requirements for minimum garage size and minimum dwelling, you know, living space. So in many ways, that is the fact of difficulty that I recognize here with the lot. Of course, that's not due to the owner's action, it was plotted this way, and it is a shoreline overlay district lot, and the survey lists the impervious at 31.2, the, the maximum required would be 30%, and I believe that the, you know, my calculations, and I had some discussions with the applicant here, that they, they used this part of the driveway that's off the lot in that calculation, and it's probably more likely in the range of 28% as shown, you know, as the true pervious, impervious percentage. And, and actually, that's, that's part of the staff recommendations, that a correct calculation be, be submitted, and it shows that the, you know, the building, final building permit applications show a impervious percentage of less than 30% or less, also that city engineer concerns be met. Construction or demolition shall require all, required permitting, and, and no erosion issue shall result from the construction of the home. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Questions for Donovan? Mike?
The existing house in this picture, is that their garage, or is that the house? The next lot down, it says 12 feet, 4 inches. Yes, that one?
Yeah.
Is that a house or a garage?
I am not sure.
It's a house. It's a house.
Dennis?
This is another lot that has extreme topography, it's, it's got a lot of slope to it, and I, I'm, I'm going to support this here, but there are going to be some challenges here, because there's more than, more than, you know, 10 feet of, of fall on this site, there's probably 15, 14 or 15 feet. It's, it's significant, and I, without, without a, an actual design here, these retaining walls are, I mean, it goes back to, to Mike's contention that this, this is not a, there's not a grading plan, and I don't know, I'm just wondering if, if when there are lots that involve extreme topography, if we shouldn't require a grading plan of them, because that's, that just is, I mean, there's just, they're, they just have the two drawings, the one which was the existing conditions, and then this very simplistic site plan, which, you know, which, you know, gives us an idea of the parameters, but it does not, it does not illustrate what they're going to do, how they're going to handle this extreme topography here.
Yeah, certainly, I understand. I think, and the builder here is, is giving a hairy eyeball.
Yeah, there was a drainage plan, we said it just does not show it.
Yeah. Okay. Let me, I think, is it this one? No. Because I, yeah, I think you're, I am. Because I did receive some, something else from Mr. Hall, and did forward it to the city engineer. Do you have a, do you have a paper copy there?
I have the hand one before the surveyor.
Oh, okay.
Then the surveyor sent it to you, you sent to your engineer, he's commenting on it already, but this, this is his hand.
Yeah, there was another one you submitted, I guess it didn't make it into the project folder.
Do we want to put that up on the screen, Donovan?
Yeah, no, the, I think there's, there's one that's cleaned up.
Why are you looking for that? Other questions?
Well, I guess, the question I have is that there's, and that relates to the same thing, and that's, there are, the engineer reviewed the plan and, and had some suggestions in regard to how the retaining wall, the different retaining walls were being put to, for the side lots, for one thing, and I, and I think for the upper portion, for the drainage as well. Are those-
Conditions taken into account on the drawing that we're seeing?
No, those are, those are made following, no, this is, this is the submitted drainage plan for you. The, no, this was, Ryan made a, these comments based on this, and, you know, if the variance is approved, that the, you know, the, the drainage plan needs to meet these conditions, you know, for, for the building permit.
So you're, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I mean, this illustrates what I kind of guessed is going to be the situation here, and there's, there's no attempt with this grading plan to keep the, the water on this property, you know, there's not a swale along each side of the house, because it would be nearly impossible to do because of all the slope. And I just, I know that we've been very exacting at times with, on other site plan applications that we, that the client, or that the applicant illustrate or show that they're not running water, you know, they're not running a lot of water onto adjacent property, but you can see the way they've got the contours, both on the north and the south side of this house here, it's, it would, it would slope, the, the grade would slope toward the neighboring property, and there's no swale to, to stop the water from, from flowing that way.
That, that's correct. What we can see on the, you know, with the, the engineer's conditions, is, you know, listed here, and this is what the, you know, the final drainage plan needs to comply with. here, and this is what the, you know, the final drainage plan needs to comply with, was, is, is the creation of these swales along a property line. So, you know, I agree with you that they're not shown on the submitted.
Okay, so he's covered it.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know what the rough pitch is, but you can also put gutters on it. Gutters would help, I don't know.
Yeah, all of that kind of stuff would help, but there's, that, that, that condition covers it. That means that that'll have to be revised. Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Other questions? Donovan and I have one on a variance. We're asking for just a setback, but since this house is going to be under the nine sixty square foot requirement, do we need to add that in?
No, no, the total square footage is over that. I was saying that, you know, within the, the building footprint, you know, conforming building footprint, it would, it would, you know, they couldn't meet that on a, in a single level home. It's, you know, as an example of the practical difficulty with this lot. The actual total, the square footage for the structure is eleven twenty-four, so it does meet the minimum city standards, and a two-car garage.
Oh, okay. Somewhere I thought I read differently, but thank you for clarifying that. And then my other question is, what happens to that wooden retaining wall, now that you're putting in this concrete one? If you look between the lake and the concrete one, there's a wood retaining wall right there. Is that staying as is?
I don't know.
Okay, well, it's that, okay, one may come up. Any other questions for Donovan? Hearing none, the applicant would like to say a few words. We ask you please come up, state your name and address for the record, please. Everyone can come up if you want. If you're helping out on the project, come on up.
I'm Jerry Peterson. I live at forty-seven sixty Preserve Court in Hugo. Have owned this piece of property for many years, belonged to my mother, or my mother-in-law. Anyway, and Mark Hall, who's prying on doing all the work for me, is here with me. So, we're, the question about the retaining wall in front, I've always assumed that that was going to go away, and the whole thing would be graded properly to, and what I've told Mark is that I really want that whole front of the house to be some kind of rain garden thing. I'm kind of into low maintenance at my age, so I don't want to mow lawns. I'd rather see something there that's going to hold the water.
Questions for the applicant? Anything else you'd like to add?
No. I mean, we, as you know, we started with a cabin and a, not, all these things were non-conforming, and we're trying to figure out what to do with it, and seems like the best thing to do is rip it all out and try to conform.
Thank you.
The, just throw that two cents, you were talking about the building and how deep it is and all that, and we've already checked it out with the structural engineer. I build plenty of buildings, and it's a top-card bearing trusses, it all works, will need nothing special. You can have up to a sixteen-foot poured wall without reinforcement, like any normal wall, and we already meet that, we did the heist on it, so it'll be, everything will be fine.
Yeah, I'm sure you can do it structurally. I just wanted to make sure that
Yeah.
somebody had looked at this closely enough to make sure that, you know, that there's going to be a deeper, either a deeper-than-usual basement, or
Yes, and that
some other
That it will be a little bit deeper than usual basement.
Yeah.
The whole truss system will sit at the top of
Sure.
wall. So his garage, he'll walk right in the house, it'll be a flat, there won't be a step, you know, it'll be as, you know, almost AED.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We ask if you'd like to speak to this application, to please come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes giving us your thoughts. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the issue?
If that's these photos around and look, they're basically of the property next door.
I'm Mark Tuie. I live at two-one-three-two-five Fondant Avenue North, and we don't, my wife and I don't approve of this plan. There's, we have a neighbor that's collecting junk, and he's going to be taking all the scraps from Mr. Peterson's garage, or the building's materials, and he's already started making a mess of his property, which will bring down our property value. So that's the reason why we don't approve of it. I live right next door to Vince. Vince has vacant property.
So the, the concern is not with the project and the building, but the scrap that'll be coming off and the debris?
Carl Graff, two-one-three-one-zero Fondant Avenue. Friend Jerry, a good friend, it'll be cheaper for him to give the garage to Vince, and Vince, and he says he's been working with Donovan here very closely, of moving the garage up the hill and facing it toward us. He has no access to the land where he wants to move it. What we are basically requesting is, we think Jerry's got a great plan, it's going to, we're all for it, it's okay. But the side effects, the fallouts, and how it's done is just a disaster. There was, when you introduce things, you talked about demolition of the things on the property. There are three structures. We have no problem if you, if that's part of what's going on, is to take those pieces, destroy them, get them out, and do not dump two-by-fours or anything over the fence, and you talked about drainage earlier coming down. This gentleman has acquired rotten railroad ties, they're piled on the city right-of-way, and he is putting them down that line where you're worried about water flow. He has dug strange ditches. You've got a mess over there. So we support the property, but we do not support how it's going to be done. So I would like to say I'm opposed to it too, unless all the buildings are demolished and removed, and no surplus stuff is dumped over the fence or on the road.
If I may, I assume that these three buildings are being demolished?
It was the intent to demolish them, the neighbor that he referred to, asked me if he could move the garage rather than demolish it. And my thought at the moment was, if it saves me money, fine, I don't care. I told him, you can't move the garage without getting permits. And, and that's the last I said to him, and he said, I can take care of that. Look, if, if he doesn't have the permits, if there's asbestos issues that have to be taken care of there, that we don't know about, we'll have to demolish it. So I, you know, I don't know where to stand on this issue. These guys are kind of blackmailing this project to, to force our neighbor into being a more well-behaved citizen. I think it's, I'm kind of stuck in the middle.
Carlson, McCain, their lead asbestos people, will be there tomorrow to do the asbestos ones. When they come through, they will find something, they always do. It'll have to be, all the paperwork will be done, the proper permits, it'll be taken away in dumpsters. It will be done by Olson companies or Donaway companies. It'll be done, all the rolling, all the put in the place.
So as the builder, you're anticipating all the buildings will just be dumpstered and gone?
Yeah. They'll find something, will have to, and the people come up, and this will take a little process. This will take time, because asbestos people are ready to come up and do their work. It's not going to be much, but it's going to happen. Then the regular demolition will be done either by Olson or Donaway.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, is there anything that's going to be done with the current mess? It's just piling up.
Sir, I'll, I'll Take that as a registering complaint, and I'll give you my card if you want to follow up. I will file with Vince.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, your pictures are right up here. Sir, your pictures? Your photos?
Your picture?
Right there. Your photos?
Oh, you can keep them.
Or give them to Donovan.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Anyone else? Last call, does anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Mr. Chairman? I'd just like to make comment to the, to the applicant and to the neighbors. When you see the public works guys in your neighborhood, give them a thumbs up and thank them, because it's areas like this that are very difficult for those public works guys to do work, to maintain the road, and to do the snow plowing, and they work extra hard for your neighborhood.
Other comments?
Donovan, is there, is there a way to build it in anywhere here that the buildings have to be demolished and they can't be moved out? Can that be, is there any way to put that as a condition?
I assume so. I mean, I have kind of, I'm pretty skeptical that any structure being moved would receive a building permit to actually improve it, or the, the owner of that, of that property to the north would assume the cost of that sort of improvement, because it would have to meet, you know, current building codes. That's the benefit it could be. So I mean, I think the natural process would have it not be moved, you know, even if it made it off the lot, given what, you know, the builder's described as, you know, probable asbestos contamination issue. But certainly, the Plan Commission could say that a demolition permit does include removal of all material from the site as a condition, you know, of it being issued.
Eric?
I understand the concerns the neighbors have, and, and being upset with another neighbor that probably doesn't always take care of the neighborhood as well as we'd all like. But I don't think we should make the judgments of another person that's not the applicant here, and, and go down any rabbit hole of a pathway that we're going to say, this might happen with this thing that was here, or that thing, and try to write conditions. We should look at this application as just what it is, from the gentlemen that are presenting it tonight, and if there's a problem with another neighbor in any capacity, let staff deal with it, and if they don't like the answer from staff, they can always appeal that back to us. But I don't want to add on a whole bunch of conditions tonight for, for something that this applicant has nothing to do with, quite frankly. The, as far as this plan goes, though, to build on this property, you have to get one variance or another. You're going to have to get the minimum size variance, or you're going to have to get the, the setback variance. Fondant Avenue being as interesting as it is driving down there. The setback variance makes a whole lot more sense than the size variance. And so for me, I think we just approve it as staff recommended. I think the water issues that were brought up earlier were addressed well. I don't see any other problems with this plan, so I'm ready to support it unless somebody else has.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve it, subject to the four conditions as outlined by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion on a motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next, next on our agenda is an appeal of zoning administrator decision for Jennifer Rosick, Jeff Anderson, Alan Yelly, Patricia Yelly, eleven-twenty and eleven-thirty-two Bay Drive Southeast. Before I turn this over to Donovan, this is a fairly rare event, and probably something new for a few of the members who have not been through an appeal, but we are here to either sustain what the zoning administrator has found, or to deny what the zoning administrator has come up with. So that is why, that was what the motion we will be looking for. Nothing, nothing besides that. So with that, I turn it over to you, Donovan.
I'd like to present the appeal of a zoning administrator's determination of a newly-installed pavement area as a driveway. Received a couple complaints from residents, reporting that a kind of a driveway area in the, you know, between two homes, the eleven-thirty-two and eleven-twenty Bay Drive Southeast, have been paved. There currently is not a paving permit that the city requires, though there are a number of restrictions that, you know, development standards do put on where one can, you know, pave driveways, and in particular, in Shoreland lots like, like, like these. The, you know, impervious surface, of course, is an issue. Steep slopes can be an issue. In this case, the impervious surface is not the, what I believe is the primary issue. But here's the, the two properties, and the newly paved area is between here and sloping down toward the lake, and here's, you know, one of the channels of the lake. The story begins in 2010, when the property owner to the north paved the section shown in, in yellow here, and is largely within the, the right-of-way. The city noted that there was unpermitted work in the right-of-way, and also questioned whether this amount of impervious would have this property exceed the impervious surface maximum. I also like to note, on this property, we see the same sort of necklace-looking figures of those are, those are, those are terrace walls, because there is a large, rather steep slope that occurs right, basically along here, that's common to both this area between the eleven-thirty-two house and their detached driveway, as well as the same slope as here between the two homes that are the subject of this appeal. The, this, this gives you some, also from that, that same era, that same 2010, that the extent of the, the concrete, this was later removed in, in, in 2011, turf reestablished. The, and here, here are the two homes in 2015, a street view, which does show a tree here, and some sort of, you know, gravel between the two, the two properties. And then in 2018, this is what I was called to the property to take a photo of. As I began discussions with the, with the property owner to the, to the south, there, Mr. Yella, he asked, what is the definition of a driveway? There is currently no definition of a drive within the, neither the zoning code or the adopted engineering standards. However, within city code, there is language that relates to how, that words and phrases shall be taken in their plain or ordinary and usual sense, with the caveat that technical words shall have their meaning according to their technical import, and, and then also that following the definitions, which is a rather short definition list, shall apply unless the context indicates, you know, a different meaning. And in this, you know, in my staff determination that this is a driveway, and then by extension, it, you know, is an impermissible, you know, paint, concrete, the definition of where doc, or, not definition, I'm sorry, the, the performance standards for driveways require that they be not located within five feet of a side or rear property line, and also with And also within the required front yard, which is, you know, the first 30 feet from the, from the front lot line, that there not be any, any parking areas unless they're directly in front of the garage, as shown here with the, with the older driveways. And so the determination here is that this is a driveway, and the appellants question, the property owners question that. And they, they instead assert that it's a shared outdoor hardscape space. And here, they submitted a photo that shows a couple tiki torches with pots to show how they've kind of dressed it up a little bit. This is a photo they also submitted that is of the prior condition. And obviously, it's a class five that was installed here somewhere along the lines. Some grasses here, you can see some, some rutting, some gully in the, in the middle there. But you can see that slope that I referred to, and also you can see the slope in this other submitted photo again. And also, these are, these black hoses represent water from gutter downspouts that are, you know, used to not have water be directed down, you know, this slope. Also submitted was a photo that says, you know, this is, there was water damage to the foundations for this. When I showed this to the city engineer, he did believe this is a groundwater issue, not a surface water issue. And again, here's a photo of that, of that current paved slope, which reaches down beyond the houses, and you can see the channel beyond. And upon reconsideration, I did realize that there, there was a section of newly installed concrete area that was outside the five-foot set, required setback, and potentially could be, you know, as some sort of a walkway or a concrete apron, you know, for the, you know, for the, you know, for this northern property. The southern property, however, basically all this is within five feet or else. Staff has the concern now that this would exceed the 30% allowed for this property. Though the size is smaller than allowed for 30%. In 2002, during redevelopment, the house was granted a variance to allow for a 30% impervious. The survey on, on file has that current impervious about 29.7, so it's a concern about any, any impervious, which, so if the applicant did want to add impervious in some, with some concrete apron where it was, you know, outside the five foot or even walkways are not allowed to encroach upon this area, they would have to show, you know, any sort of increased impervious would have to show that it would still meet that 30% maximum. The, so in the meantime, you know, I was, I was, I, it puzzled me why that the, the property owners had spent so much, you know, money to, to put a concrete slope in. And then a couple of weeks later, I was sent a photo that shows what I believe is the motive for this. And there's a newly installed shed and relocated fish house that are on, in the rear of the, the, the southern property. And I believe that, you know, that, that, those, that location, those locations would be facilitated by a, a concrete slope. And so, and finally, the applicants did submit a photo saying that they did take out five feet of this, of this area that is within the public right of way. However, the, the survey we have on file shows that it's, the front lot line is 8.8 feet from, you know, from the, from the curb. So basically, that, you know, there's not enough, you know, there still would be more concrete to be removed in the public right of way. But I believe, you know, the applicants have made a good faith effort to remove some because in their narrative, they, they report that they don't, they don't contest that this was an impermissible placement of the, of the concrete. And so, you know, what's, what's before you is, you know, the determination, and this is a driveway from staff, two property owners questioning that determination. With, with the assistance of the city attorney, you have fines, written fines of fact along with exhibits. If the, if the Plan Commission chooses to make a motion to deny the appeal, and I'm happy to take any questions from Plan Commission now.
Any questions? Mike?
If you go to the picture where they show it like from the lakeside showing up all that concrete, well, okay, that's good enough too, that one. Does it just go straight down and dead end, or does it, it looks like it wraps around to the one on the right? Does that wrap around for that underground garage?
It does a little bit, not, not in a large.
Is it a, I mean, does it cover the whole garage door down there? Because when I was out on the lake, I, I kind of pulled up in there and it looked, it looked like they poured a whole apron, you know, in front of that garage, or they got underground parking on that other garage? Yeah, see how that goes all the way around?
Yeah.
Is that part of the impervious surface, or?
It's, to me, it's not an impervious surface concern. This, the survey I could find in city records from that 2010 concrete complaint showed about 15% impervious on this lot and, you know. So I don't have a big concern about the, the impervious.
Because I thought if they had the cement in the front and had to take that out, if it had something to do with the impervious service, and then they, now, eight years later, they pour more all the way down and around the back, you know, I, I guess I'm just trying to picture this, you know, as far as, does the impervious surface have anything to do with that lot on the north? Or just the, the one on the south?
It's the, that restriction is mostly about the, the southern property.
Southern property, okay.
And, you know, and right now, it's, you know, as I was noting that, you know, if, though it, you know, my conversations with, you know, with building staff, you know, if, if one is, has a, you know, a drainage issue around a foundation, you install drain tile with much less, less expense. You don't have the scent, the sort of condition where you're really kind of providing a raceway for the water to come down. You know, I can imagine that, you know, the bottom here, it's during rainstorms, it's going to scour out that, that bottom area, make it difficult for grass.
Or some timber, timber at the top or something just to stop it. Because I read in the.
But this, I mean, so, I mean, my conversation with them is that they've never seen this as a condition. And, you know, commonly, there's terrace walls as shown elsewhere in the, you know, 1132 property. But the, so, I mean, there is some, some area like a concrete apron that could be, you know, that wouldn't be, you know, within five feet of the, of that property line that, you know, that could be allowed, you know, permitted to stay.
Well, I, I read in the comments that the water go, it goes up over the curb, and then that's where the washout was, or it goes over the curb instead of up the two driveways?
That, yeah.
Driveways are lower than, than the curbing.
Yeah.
So I find it hard to believe that, because there's a, there's a catch basin in the one corner, and then two houses down, there's another catch basin all on that same side of the road. So, I mean, it'd have to be like totally plugged for water to even get close to that high. And it would go up the driveways before it would go over that curb.
Correct. Well, also here, that black hose was replaced by a, where the downspout actually now leads onto the areas between these, the two, you know, concrete sections. So that indicates there is a downward slope, you know, along here, leading, you know, water away from the houses.
That'd have to be a lot of water to go over the curb, up the slope, and then down the backyard.
Other comments, questions? So, being a unique application like this, we are not required to take comment. However, we have a longstanding tradition of always liking to hear from applicants in the public, and I think we should in this case. So unless someone's opposed to that, I don't see any heads shaking. Would the applicants, for lack of, the homeowners wish to comment? And we ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Okay, so I can open, I can put some clarity to some of the questions you have.
Please, a name and.
My name is Alan Yell from 1132 Bay Drive Southeast, Forest Lake. And then I can help put some clarity to some of the questions that were brought, brought forward just a few moments ago. So I have here currently have handles for you, also have a zip drive if you can pull up if you want.
I can, well, yeah, actually, probably best for me to do it.
One file on there, go ahead and open that file. Make this a little bit probably easier viewing for you. PDFs, downloads, blow off as properly as you like them to.
Thank you.
So this is additional information that you do not have in your packet this evening. And I'll see if those pulled up there. So our question will be, Donovan, will you be pulling up the appeal that we sent in completely?
Sure.
This evening?
You want, you want the photos?
On the actual appeal that has the photos and the exhibits as part of the appeal package?
Or do you want the, the text as well? I, I separate photos from the text.
Okay.
Black and white.
That's fine, I'll reference something specific if we need it, and I'll ask you to go to that photo. So for, on page one of the packet of information that I just gave you, covers the overall area that we spoke about. And it's between the two properties as described between 1122 and 1132 Bay Drive Southeast. It, it is that we do believe that we have, there's going to be no adverse impact to the community on what has been installed on our property. We believe the city interest is being preserved, along with there's no negative impact to the property value. So if you turn to, turn to page two, Mike, you asked the question about that water runoff going over the gutter.
Correct.
Well, it's, the water does not run off Bay Drive and over the existing curb.
Okay, well, that's what was mentioned, that's all.
Sure, so that's, so this is some of the clarity I like to put to the details that we've talked, talked about previously. So the water runs off points from Bay Drive Southeast. These two areas indicated by the arrows have a large volume of water runoff from Bay Drive Southeast onto the properties of 1120 and 1132. Water flows off of Bay Drive Southeast from the northeast across driveway of 1120 and into the yard space in question. Residual water that stays along the curbside then puddles up and flows across the driveway of 1132 into the yard space in question. The water would then continue to run down between the houses, causing the severe washout and damage as described. This, page two, this was a photo that I actually took this morning while it was still pretty dark. And this is just from the light rain that we've had over the last few, last couple of days. You see that whole area of that new concrete area that was removed, that first five feet, that is filled with, with water. If that concrete wasn't there, it would have continued on flowing down between the houses, causing the erosion that's in, has been our concern, and also the issues we have around the foundation. So if we move to page three, once again, you'll see that same image with the plastic drainage piping that connects to the gutter system that was installed. So the comment was made previously that the gutters flow onto the concrete, that is not true. So what we have underneath the concrete is we have, these black drainage pipes are tied together on both properties and flow out beneath the concrete surface and have two spillways that dump out into the grass on the backyard. So we are taking all the water that's coming off the roof of the property and diverting it away and down away from this slope. Questions on that, or for what I've covered yet so far?
On page, I think it was three, you showed the water standing in there from this morning.
Yes, sir.
How deep would you say that water is?
I would say that water was approximately three to four inches deep.
Well, how, how thick is your, how deep is your concrete there, your slab? Because that's three to four inches deep?
Oh, no, that concrete slab was a little over six to eight inches, depending on where it's at in there. It, right in that area, it is.
Six to eight inches?
Yes. Well, we cut out that area, we had a six-inch-deep
Okay.
concrete saw, and we could not get all the way through the concrete. Could not cut all the rebar out, that was in the very bottom layer of it. So I had to go back behind, through afterwards to cut that out.
Mr. Chair. Can we ask questions as long as he's up there and?
I, we may as well, because I think otherwise we're going to go back and forth on these pages forever.
So, my question is, who poured that concrete?
Mr. George Hannah of George Hannah Contract and Services, he is here this evening.
And was there a permit pulled to pull that, pour that concrete?
We did not pull a permit on that, and that was our mistake.
Why do you have a contract, why is the concrete so thick? Do you, is it?
It was a two, a two-inch by six-inch forms that we use because of the slope, the severe slope, the rebar that we put in there to keep it from washing down.
And if I remember, we heard stated earlier this evening that there is no permit required for this work. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So if there's no other further questions with what I've covered to date, I'll move on to page four, which is an illustration of simply of the drainage pipe that's connected to those down gutters. Once again, to reduce the amount of water runoff down the slope.
Is that, is that picture of the bottom of the slope where the water would come up out?
That is the bottom of the slope, yes, sir, in the backyard. And there's, there's two of those.
Mr. Chair, can we go back? Donovan, are you sure about the permit on the driveways in the city of Forest Lake? We have a driveway access permit. And, you know, that was something that, you know, I considered that is an enforcement issue, but to me, you know, so we kind, and we kind of went back and forth, I mean, obviously, there's not a curb cut there. But it seemed to me it was easier to declare this as a driveway, it was an impermissible driveway, than to move forward into all sorts of other technicalities. I mean, because we would never, I wouldn't encourage him, you know, the owners, to submit a driveway access permit that we would refuse because we rarely allow, you know, more than one residential access. And, you know, so that's the only way we actually do, and we have standards, though. I mean, you know, maximum 30-foot width at the curb, minimum 12, you know, is maximum impervious percentages. You know, you know, I get, commonly do get calls from homeowners asking, you know, how close can the driveway be to the property line? And generally, it's, it's something of an honor system, you know, that, that contractors do follow. And it's rare that we do have complaints around that. I'm sure, you know, there, there are probably, you know, wider than 30-foot driveways that are poured, or, you know, they're within five feet. But it's not, it's not, I wouldn't say it's a common problem. And, you know, so far, there's not been a, you know, strong, you know, urge to, you know, I think a strong need to even require that permit.
So they don't have to get a permit, but they still have to follow the standards?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I have clarification on, would that standard be the standard for a driveway?
I, yeah, I believe so, I mean, that's kind of. I mean, that's kind of what the, yeah, the subject of this meeting is about.
Okay, so we can move on to the next page. That's fine. So it's a photo of, yeah, I'm on the page here, which, which is the photo of, yes, Donovan has it up. Do you see those on your screen as well now currently? So this is, uh, from down looking up the slope. And I put some, uh, dimensions in here just to help put some clarification to why this is not a driveway. So the soffit overhang on the property 1120 is a four foot overhang soffit, which gives us a clearance of seven foot, five inches on, from the surface to the bottom edge of that soffit. From the gas meter over to that space is only seven foot, six inches. Very narrow space along with the steep angle. The angle is about a 40 degree angle on that slope, which would make this, uh, slope, it would be considered a hardscape area because it's not feasible to use it as a driveway. It's physically not possible to bring this fish house down to the area as described in page seven of the staff memo. They noted that we recently brought a fish down, house down after this concrete hardy used space was installed. That is not true. That was an assumption that was made by somebody, whether it was a city official, somebody else taking pictures of the property. I'm not aware of who that was because we are uninformed. They were out on, on the site taking those photos and information. It would have been a nice that being able to have a conversation at that point in time with them so more information could have brought forward to the committee on the front side of this meeting tonight.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Mister Yell?
Yes, sir.
What would be the reason that you poured concrete between the two houses all the way down versus, uh, doing a natural landscaping to control the water and, and the runoff? I guess I don't, what?
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand.
I can address that.
Why you would pour concrete all the way down?
So, uh, we've acquired the property in 2000, late in 2017. Actually, it was just over a year ago. It was September of 2017 when we moved into the property. And speaking with our neighbors at 1120 and speaking with other neighbors that have been in the area for a lot longer, and one of the neighbors is here tonight to speak on a part of that, and now could be a potential good time for her to talk about that, is multiple things have been done on that hillside over the, the years to try to maintain and hold that slope and they have not worked. So instead of trying more items that aren't going to work, increasing the washout amount, having large amounts of debris flowing down across the yard from that hill and eventually making it into the lake, that is ceased stopped. It does not make it to the water anymore. You could see a mud path that would go down to the lake and drain into the lake. We have omitted that from happening with this hardscape surface.
You've tried retaining walls across there with stairs to, to catch the water and trap the water at different levels.
I can say that I have not done that because we've only been in the property for the last year.
Okay, do you know if anyone prior to you has tried that?
I personally do not know. Our neighbor could speak to that point on what has been done over the last 20 years. Would you like them to address that now? That'd be great.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, what was it? Name, address or something?
Name and address please for the record.
Sorry, it's late, I'm tired. Heather O'Meara, 1094 Bay Drive. Um, I live next to the Jeff and Jen, so I'm on the north, I'm a north neighbor. Jeff and Jen are directly to my south and then these guys are one house further south from that. And I have lived at my house.
So, so you're not affected by this?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just a neighbor. Yeah. A tired one, sorry. First, before I even say anything, I'm going to say that sadly, so any, once I'm done speaking, any questions that you have for me, shoot them off now because I'm actually going to have to ditch out and I don't, and I don't want to be rude, but, um, I am late for an obligation that I really need to go to. So I'm really sorry that I'm going to kind of speak my thing and then, then leave. So I have lived there for almost 24 years, about 23 and a half years now. So I've been there for a really long time and both houses have been owned by several different people the entire time that I've lived there. In fact, the house that they are living in now is a house that was built after a previous house burned down and so there's been like three or four people in each location the entire time that I've been there. None of them good, by the way, all of them, these, these are the nice ones now, so that's why I'm here. During this time, the whole section, I live on the, the alley, I'm the first house in the alley. That area as well as their houses, this whole section, this kind of almost a one block chunk has had a water problem. In fact, um, the people next to me to the north have, um, been complaining, in fact, they, and I don't know who they complained to, but they complained to the city weekly after the, um, alley had finally been paved and much to my dismay because for 23 years I had wanted to get the alley paved because it was all beat up and they finally paved it and I was so excited, but then that neighbor, um, complained because what it did is it took the water that these guys were talking about that kind of pulls up in the yard, sorry, pulls up in the yards and it kind of made, um, more of a mess because the, the road then became equal with our driveways rather than kind of, our driveways used to be taller. And so in doing that, um, she was very upset. I loved it. However, that also did increase some of the water that would flow, um, towards the regular Bay Drive from the alley. And even though there's a little drainage guy in the ground, um, at the end, a little drainage guy, sorry, in the, in the ground at the end of the alley before it gets to their house, the water, as he was saying, it doesn't really go like just along the edge of the road. It kind of goes across people's yards and it, it goes across driveways. It's just weird. I don't know how the whole thing is, but for 23 years it's been that way. So that's what I was going to say. During the time that I've lived there, the various people who have lived in those houses have always had a problem with that one slope. As he was saying, it's extremely steep and it's, you know, I mean, you would never even want to try and drive even a four wheeler down it. It's just like straight down. And there have been people that I have not seen, um, terraced landscaping, probably because people, I don't know why, they just didn't think of it or didn't want to do it. But there have been bushes that have been planted there and there have been landscaping to the scent, uh, to the extent of, um, wildflowers, like somebody put, one person put wildflower mix down. That didn't work. Another person tried grass seed on top of soil and everything else. That didn't work. Somebody else had a giant class five, uh, section put in there. That didn't work. They tried regrading it so that it wasn't so steep, but that didn't work because it, it just kind of bunched up. The water makes these weird canals in it. The previous people that were there would go out after it rained and they would just try and fill in the little canals. There was pictures of the little divots in there and they would try and fill it up and then every time it would rain, they would fill it up. But as he was saying, it, it just became this mud slick that would go down and it just went directly into the lake. So I have not seen terrace things there, but I have seen various forms of landscaping and plants and bushes and grass and none of them seem to work and all of them just kind of ended up without doing really anything. I was also available during those times to see, um, along the sides of the houses, um, not down in the lower garage, but along the sides of the houses, right where the cement is there, there was, um, kind of like pitting or something along the concrete, like almost look, looking like it was, and this is not, this is just a, uh, an example of what it looked like. I'm not saying this is what it is because I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but you know how when you get like salt or something on a concrete, like from the road, I don't know if that's what it is, but, um, and it kind of like eats away at the concrete sort of like, so there was, it's like the sides of the concrete on the, on the houses, on both of them, along that thing were like all kind of getting crumbly and pitted. I don't know from what, but we assumed at the time it was because of all the water and whatever gunk was in the water that was coming with the water that was going down there against the houses. So I can say that. Anyway, when I was watching this get built, the thing that impressed me and, and, um, and this has nothing to do with my friendship for them, but when it was being built, I initially thought, ooh, maybe it's going to be a driveway. And then my husband even said, there's no way that can be a driveway. The roof eaves are too low and it's way too narrow and it's way too steep. And he's right. I can't even walk up and down it when I try to get down to their yard because I'm, it's just, you slide. Anyway, um, when they were building it, the thing that impressed me was that they had all this drain tile stuff that somebody had mentioned and it was actually diverting the water so that instead of just this big, as somebody said, like, um, waterfall that would now come down and just destroy the grass, it goes out and it kind of disperses. So it takes this giant mud bath and now it goes gently into the yard and it, it actually does really make a difference. And to be quite honest, it makes it look better for me as a neighbor because I'm not looking at all this junk coming down the thing. The other thing I can attest to is that the fish house never came down there. It would not fit. The fish house was brought another, there's many people that actually have normal driveways that are driveways that go down to the lake. And because, um, they wanted to get the fish house down there initially so that they could put it out in front on the bay, not take it, I mean, we live on the lake, so it's just going to go from the yard to the lake. It's not, I don't know why it would ever go up to the roadside because it just goes on to the lake. So they had to borrow somebody else's actual driveway and get it down there and then move it across. And I actually saw that happen. So I do know that that happened. There's also a shed that is there that, um, was, I was told was brought up as a, um, like the shed came down there and I was also home and I saw them literally carry the shed in pieces lumber themselves. There wasn't any cars or anything. They wouldn't fit. It just wouldn't fit. I have also seen it since it's been done, um, I have gone there after the rain. My son, we, since we live next door to the Andersons, my son has a little job cleaning the dog kennel. And so I will walk over there and when he's going to do that, you know, sometimes just to make sure he's doing a good job or whatever. And so I've been there since it's been done and it's a huge improvement to the yards. They're not muddy and disgusting anymore. It, it actually worked. And so I know it doesn't seem maybe logical that why pave it when you can try this or this or this, but all of that with the exception of the terrace timbers, but all the other stuff was tried and it didn't work. And I, maybe I'm part of the problem because I would tell them, oh, no, well, somebody did try grass. Well, maybe we can, oh, no, somebody tried that. Well, maybe, and I'm like, somebody tried that. So, um, I had lived there to see that try and fail anyway. So I think it's an improvement. I don't think it's an eyesore. There's no way in heck anybody could even get a vehicle down there if they wanted to. It's too narrow, it's too steep, it's too short. Does it help with the problem? Yeah. Is it, does it keep the water away from their foundation? Yeah. Does it fix the water that comes off the roofs? Yeah. Does it make the grass better? Yeah. So that's what I was going to say with that. The other thing I wanted to say, and then I do have to close, um, is that I have been here since 6:30 and this, this has nothing to do, nothing to do with the project, but it's really important to me that I say this. I've been here since 6:30 waiting to be able to say something and the reason being, and I've been here since 6:30 on the night, today is my son's birthday. He turns 16, my only son, and he's turning 16 tonight and I'm not there because I'm here. And that's huge. That's really huge. It's, that's, plus I'm a teacher and I have lesson plans to make tonight and I'm still not doing that. I'm here. And the reason I'm here is because I've been there for almost 24 years and most of the neighbors are not good. They are horrible people. They're mean, they set off fireworks in the middle of the night. We've got some areas of town in that area. They're just not very pleasant and all the people that have lived in these two locations before them have been very difficult and very stressful. And now we actually have some people that we adore. They are the most generous, most loving, kindest, best neighbors I could. They will give you their right arm and they will do whatever it takes to please anybody. When there's anything that's an issue, they will, they will just bend over backwards. And so when I heard that this was an issue, I was first shocked because I'm like, well, A, it's not a driveway. B, you know, the fish house didn't go down there and C, you can't get down there if you wanted and D, it fixed the problem. So I was all excited and now it's like, wait a minute, you, it can't be a problem. So I came here tonight instead of being with my son on his birthday because part of what makes Forest Lake as good as it sounds, if we were going to go there, is the community. And there's a lot of tension that's been happening with the city council and government and division between township and city and all the stuff for the 23 and a half years that I've been here, there's been a lot of stress. And we're finally starting to get little pockets of people coming together, whether they're, you know, voting for or against around about, it doesn't matter. People are coming together and they're finally finding their neighbors and, you know, we finally have a good group of people after having a lousy group of people that everyone complained about. And I don't want to lose that. And so I'm giving up my night to be here to just say, even though that has nothing to do with this, it does stand, it does say something about them as people and that they wouldn't try and do some devious thing like, ooh, we're going to pretend it's not a driveway when really it is because I've been there and I can tell you, there was never any intention of it being a driveway. If they wanted to make it a driveway, they would have cut out the curb and made it an actual driveway. It was literally done because it was messed up erosion wise and I just hope you take my word for that and the fact that I'm willing to give up my kid's birthday to say that because it's the truth and it means a lot to me to say the truth. So I'm done now and if you have questions.
Thank you for your comments.
Any other ways?
Questions? Where, where did you live? You live right next door to them?
Uh, next door to these guys, yes. I'm, um, to the north.
South.
I'm to the north.
To the north?
I'm to the north.
Okay, okay.
I'm in the alley, the first house in the alley.
1094.
Yeah. Yeah. That's my little yellow swimmer.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know if we need to hear any more from Mister Yell regarding the photos. Uh, I mean, I think we have another bunch of people that need to see. We've all kind of seen the photos.
Can I give a couple of quick clarification comments? Real quick, I'll make it quick, respectful of time. First of all, thank you very much for listening to Heather.
Would you hold on a second? Excuse me, Dennis.
I don't think anybody sitting at this table has an issue with the, 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 the small building, the shed. So we don't need a detailed explanation of the shed. That's not an issue.
Yes, sir.
I think everybody at the table would agree that's not an issue. The, the, and neither is the ice house. I think that has been explained and explained and explained.
Commissioner Blatt.
We don't need to, we don't need.
Commissioner Battie, um, that is a subject of enforcement, uh, non-compliance around location of the shed and fish house. So, and impervious with, related to the shed. So I want to correct you on that one.
The impervious part.
Impervious surface.
Yeah.
So, but that's separate, that's separate from this appeal.
I, I should have clarified. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be heavy handed here about how the shed got down here. I, I don't think anybody is, that's an issue with anybody.
So Mister Chair, I do have one question to Mister Yell.
Yes, sir.
And, and this is really my concern more than anything is, do you have some sort of a shared driveway or shared patio area agreement in writing that's going to be recorded and run with the property? Cause you've created a encroachment on both your, your neighbor and created an encroachment on your property and vice versa, you created an encroachment on their property. When you go to sell those properties, there's an easement problem now. Have you got anything in writing that's?
There is currently not anything in writing. We would be willing to do that and.
Well, that's something you, you two neighbors got to figure out if we allow it because it's going to be a lean, it's going to be a cloud on the title when you go to sell the properties.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Morozic. I live on 1120 Bay Drive. Um, we have discussed putting an easement. We kind of halted everything when we got the complaint, because we didn't know if we were gonna have to rip anything up. Um, we actually had intended to wait to rip up the right-of-way until this happened, and now actually I wish we would have, because we didn't realize we didn't rip up enough. But, uh, we are willing to comply with that. Uh, but it is a shared property that we both agreed to. Um, yeah, we got the estimate together. Uh, we paid for it together. So we are willing to do cross easements on that.
And you do realize there's utility easements down those property lines, that if the utility company had to come into that property, they're gonna tear up that driveway and do whatever they need to do, and then it's your gonna be responsibility to fix it, not theirs.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Kevin.
So I'll wrap up quickly, in respect of everyone's time this evening. Um, so, we're in agreement that the shed is not necessarily an issue, other than at the point that Donovan made regarding the, it's, it's too close, it doesn't meet the 10-foot setback on the property. The, the shed currently is, is eight feet, six inches off the property line. And there's a slew of sheds just within the neighborhood. There's more than 10. I just showed you 10 photos directly in our neighborhood with sheds that are encroaching, that, within that 10-foot boundary rule that, that applies. Um, the base surface, and the way that, that the unit is constructed, we believe that we don't, have not increased our impervious surface coverage of that, because the water can run underneath it, it can drain through it. And so we believe that there's no impri, increased impervious surface area to the property. Uh, then the other thing that we didn't touch on is if Donovan, if you could pull up, it's in the zoning administrator staff memo, I believe it's page 10. It's the current file that the, this current survey that the, uh, city has on file, which I went through and verified that it, that survey is incorrect. So if you have your staff packet, that was this evening, it's on page 10. So I went through and remeasured everything. There's spots on that survey that's recorded at the city of concrete that's highlighted in yellow that does not exist. So that survey was incorrect. With the new concrete, and the, and the existing concrete, and the coverage, I've laid it all out per area, eight total areas, uh, equally in the percentage of cover at, coverage, just under 30 percent, at 29.97 percent. So that should be up on your screen now, I believe. So this accurately reflects the
Donovan, was the impervious surface issue more so the house on the south, or the north?
The, the house on the south, Mr. Yell's property. Um, and, you know, as, the way we do process these, when there's any, a real small margin of error, we do require a certificate of survey for the impervious. So, I mean, I, 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 I do this sort of thing in, in, in my office, um, measuring, you know, using Adobe Acrobat similarly. Um, but I don't count that as accurate as enough, even when we're given this, you know, a 0.3% um, you know, margin of error.
Well, and that, uh, once again, I, I use Adobe Acrobat Reader myself every day at work, in the position that I hold, using measuring blueprints, plans, site utilities. And there's a large spot for error, depending on how you, how you set that up. But this was measured with an actual tape measure. Our, my measurements were with an actual tape measure, calculated down to the percentage ba, based of a fraction of an inch. So I believe these numbers that are in front of you are 100 percent accurate. Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. The fact that the shed is based, or is resting on, on gravel area, still doesn't make it non, um, non-impervious.
All right.
I mean, it's the rooftop, on top, that runs off. I mean, it's, it's the runoff off the roof, that's the issue. And the runoff off that roof of that shed doesn't get to the base.
Sure. So I, I would be, um, more than happy, if, if that shed increased thus over that magical 30 percent number, I would take out a different existing piece of concrete off the property, and change that, and get rid of it, and turn it into a landscape area. We've already talked about that. We'd be open to do that. Uh, you know, we're, we're willing to work with the city to make sure that our property meets it, and, and also, that would be another improvement, because that's a older slab, slab of concrete, that's not, not the most attractive-looking piece of concrete. That would be on the south side of the property, which abuts up property 1156.
Um, can you, can you describe to us, I'm just, there's, there's a number of very unusual things about this overall layout here, including what you just talked about, this, um, what looks to us like a driveway that goes, um, into, there must be some kind of a lower level on the garage, and turns and goes to the west, and then connects to a, a rather large area of what appears to be, um, paved surface on the lot to the south. Is that, is that kind of a, what, what is that? Is that a, is that just access to a, uh, a, a place where boats can be launched into the lake? What is that?
No, sir. Uh, there is, on the property on 1156, which is the property to the south of ours?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about now. I'm trying to figure this, you know, what this, what this layout is here. You know, in, in my mind, that, that, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of the, the, the percentage of impervious. It's gonna have to be done by a surveyor. You know, I'm an architect, I, you know, and I understand what you've done, and, and the care you've taken, but, you know, we have to have a standard, and the standard is to have it done by a surveyor.
Sure.
That's just, that's just the way it is. But, um, will, it seems like there, there's several hair-splitting issues here that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to resolve in our own minds. I'm not sure we can do all that tonight. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come to grips with these, these definitions, uh, the issues with the setback, uh, and this whole, and the matter of the, the percentage of, uh, impervious, because that seems like that enters into the overall picture here. Um, and we'll just, you know, we're gonna just have to work through those things. And so we'll have to come to agreement on what actually has to be done, and, um, and then do it, and then come up with a, a, a conclusion that everybody agrees with, and, and, and then move forward from there.
So your question was regarding that, the concrete that's on property 1156 that goes all the way to the lake?
Yeah, you answered that.
Yes, that does go all the way. And the piece of concrete that I said that we would remove would separate our, our, our property from the concrete on their property.
Yeah, I, I think we can see that, that, that the impervious issue can be resolved relatively easily on this property. So I, I don't think we really need to, you know, beat that to death any further.
Any other questions or concerns I could answer?
I don't have any at this time.
Our, um, I mean, I guess I'm unclear about how we're gonna proceed from here.
So, I wanna know if the other neighbors wanna speak first, and, and if any, if we get any other comment, and then I think we can bring it back, and kind of figure out where we, where we gotta go.
All right.
So I wanna make sure that I, we've heard...
I'll make one, one last comment, and that will be the question is, how are we gonna use that area up on the top? Some of those planters were just moved into there, up there with those little tiki torches. We just slid those there out of the way for now. The plan is to put some raised garden beds and some other things up there, to make that a more warmer space, that we can, uh, meet and talk, and, and hang out outside. Because, you know, there is limited space in the neighborhood, and we realize that. So, thank you.
Would the, uh, other neighbor wish to make any comments?
I think Alan did a pretty good job of explaining, uh, everything. I would just point out, um, I believe it is page two of your packet, uh, or maybe three. It's the third picture in. Um, it's a picture of the, the driveway before the, the right-of-way piece was removed. But if you look at it, there's, there's gaps between, you know, our driveway and this concrete slab, between their driveway and the concrete slab, and, you know, now even a gap between the curb and the slab. So, um, you know, it's, it's not meant to be all one solid driveway, um, is indicated by, uh, this, indicating that it looks the same as the others. It, it's not intended to be that way. So that's the only other thing I wanted to add.
Any questions for the other app? All right, there is a couple other people else in the audience. Would they wish to say anything? I wanna make sure we've heard everybody before we come back here.
I'm George Hannah. I'm the contractor on the project. 2805 Noel Drive, Little Canada. Uh, when I looked at this project, it was a very difficult situation that had to be done, and that's why other people probably walked away from it. But I had a vision. Chris and I had talked it out with Jennifer, and we made it all come together, because people couldn't get into that area because of the severe slope. People didn't know how to get equipment in there. I don't know what they're thinking. We just pumped it in with a pump truck, and we made it all happen, to give a workable sol, solution for what had to be done. Um, when this project was all finished, I thought it turned out beautiful. Everything's working out good. And then we get, uh, a situation that we're up here against now, and trying to resolve, we would like to leave everything the way it is, work with the city, make it all right. I've made, uh, good efforts to, uh, take out the road right-of-way. Didn't take out quite enough that we needed to, but we'll certainly come back and take care of that, if that's what the situation needs to be. But we'd like to see everything stay the way it is, and move forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Stacy Backland. I live at 1492 11th Avenue Southeast, Forest Lake. If I walk out of my house and turn my head to the left, the view that was just up there is what I see. Um, and I would just like to say, in the interest of saving time, I just wanna say that it actually is an improvement to how it looked before. Um, before, there was a dying tree there, and it just, it wasn't attractive. Now, it's actually very, it's a lot better-looking than it was before. And I just wanted to say that. And that's, I'll take my leave unless there's a question.
Questions? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. Uh, Jeff Anderson, 1120 Bay Drive Southeast. And I just wanna mention about the tree that was there, uh, as Stacy mentioned, that it was dying. And what was happening was that it was near the edge of the slope, and the erosion was exposing the roots, which is what caused the tree to die. So the erosion was continuing, and it was just, uh, it was just one of the, uh, other problems with the erosion. And that's what I had to say.
Thank you. So I believe we've heard from everybody now. Thank you for all your comments. And so I think we have a little clearer picture of, of how the residents see it. So the, the question before us tonight, um, is that the city, and Donovan, you can probably put one of those letters up, maybe?
I'm sorry?
Uh, can you put one of your, the letters you sent to the app, to the neighbors about the driveway? I can't remember where that's at in the packet. It was late breaking at my house, but...
Which, which exhibit is B, or?
It'd be a letter from, yes, it's Exhibit A, am I correct, Donovan, in the packet?
Yeah, the, the first letter.
Indeed, it's August 22nd. Yeah, so, the, the quest, the, if I understand it correctly, Donovan, is that, um, the city is thinking this is a driveway based on, looks like a driveway, it goes all the way to the street, um, between houses, and all the way down to the backyard. So it looks like a driveway, and that is a stand that the city, um, has taken. So the problem is that there is not permitted concrete in between, uh, once you get out, within five feet of the lot line. Um, so there's this concrete sitting there that shouldn't be, it's, it's an encroachment. So the, the argument from the city's standpoint is that it's a, it's a concrete encroachment, and that it, um, it's a driveway and, and needs to be removed. The applicant's version, and I don't mean to put words in anyone's mouth, um, is that it was done to, for erosion control, and it is not a driveway. So the question we are being asked is, do we feel it's a driveway type of installation? And if that's the case, um, then we would sustain, um, the city's view. If we think it's erosion control, as the neighbors have stated, then we would, uh, deny the, um, city. Did I get that right, Donovan?
No, no, you would, you would...
I got it backwards?
Yeah.
We know what you meant.
We know what you mean.
See, they work with you here.
We'll, we'll get it.
All right. So that's what we're, we're looking to do. It's kind of a, yes, it's, it's gonna stay, or no, it's not going to stay. It's kind of where we're really looking at.
How much is it gonna stay? Or, I mean, the whole thing, or just up to the garage? The, the back part stays, or, it's all or none?
That's sort of what I understand. It's all or none, right, Donovan? Or, I probably got some wiggle room in there, but...
I, I, I believe so. I mean, there's some pieces, given the, the strength of the, the int, uh, six foot of depth of concrete, I believe it was built for vehicle travel. Um, whether, you know, I can, I can agree that perhaps a fish house couldn't be put down there. Um, but there are many ways you could've done similar erosion control, or even just done the slope as erosion control, and done the, the flat part, um, you know, as, as, you know, as a, as a grass area, um, and achieve a similar result. But when you add the two, the, um, the strength of construction of the, of the flat plain, plus the sloped area, to me, that represents a driveway, and the, the two are of a piece. Um, you know, I did note that, you know, there's some section on the northern property where it's outside the five foot, and, you know, could serve as a, as a concrete apron, um, if the homeowner desires that. But, you know, that's not, it's outside, you know, doesn't, doesn't, uh, encroach upon the five-foot setback.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I'm, I'm confused somewhat, and it's not unusual, that it says, um, we say we don't need a permit for a driveway, which, which concerns me that that's true. I, I didn't believe that that was true. But then it says here that the concrete must be removed because it's unpermitted concrete. So is that, is that a, an error statement, that it, it's needed to be permitted? I mean, I guess I, I, on the flip side, it's hard for me to believe that the homeowners doing this major of a project should not have consulted with the city to make sure that you were on even ground. That doesn't seem...
Yeah, let, let me clarify. The lack of a permit is for work within the public right-of-way, which, you know, a street opening permit, um, there's the, the different types of permits. The, where I refer to a driveway, driveway is usually simply a private improvement. And, you know, there's some pieces of it that's within the public right-of-way. Um, but that's, uh, you know, like, when you're building a new home, that's just, that's part of, it's part of the approval of the site plan. Um, so, but that, in this, in this enforcement letter that's before you, you know, the, the five-foot driveway, it's not complying with city engineering standard, as well as zoning code. And it's the concrete poured within the public right-of-way was done without a permit. And the city won't issue a permit to put that concrete within the right-of-way, because there's no public interest in, in, in installing that.
So that's what the permitting portion talks about?
Right. And that's only, you know, that's 8.8 feet of this span of, of concrete. So it's something of a minor area.
So is that what we're looking at, then? It's just the unpermitted?
That's the one piece that the, the appellants aren't, the property owners aren't... That's the one piece that the, the appellants aren't, the property owners aren't contesting. They're saying that we agree, we'll, we can, we'll remove the, the concrete, and they've started to. They, you know...
But they need to remove a small portion more, another three feet or so?
Correct.
Three feet, eight inches.
What?
Three feet, eight inches.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. If I may comment, the, um, concern I have is that it appears the need to do something here was a result, is a result of some of the water coming off the public right-of-way, uh, right or wrong. And I think that the applicants are contending that stormwater runoff from the street right-of-way is going between their properties and has caused an erosion. And they've taken upon themselves to do a public improvement. I mean, it probably should have been brought to the attention of the city, the need for some type of stormwater improvement here, and, and the matter addressed, fixed, and assessed benefited property owners. There, there's, if there's an issue here, it probably should have been addressed by the city, not the applicants. This is a situation I, I wouldn't favor. I mean, I, I don't think we really, if everybody in the city paved their side yards up to the property, you know, between properties, uh, you know, if we had this all over the city, I, this, it's not a situation I certainly would be in favor of. I mean, and I think we ought to, if we don't, we ought to have clear clarification in our zoning ordinance that requires a non-imperious, uh, setback to a property line. Typically, there is a five-foot setback for a driveway in, in all property lines, but here we got right between the properties. If, what we call it a driveway, we don't call it a driveway. It's not a situation we really want, where we've got concrete abutting common property lines. I, I, I just don't, that's not appealing. It's not something we'd want to see on a regular basis. And maybe it is needed in this spot. I don't know. But it sounds like there's something needed in terms of drainage improvement. But for the applicants to take it on themselves and to just go ahead and do it, I, 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 I'm, I'm not going to support you here. I'm going to support the staff, and you can take your argument to the city council as far as I'm concerned. I mean, that, it's, it's, it's not a good situation. I apologize for it. Um, it's, 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 it's too bad it's happened, um, but I don't think this body's going to solve it. I, I think your, your, your issue's going to have to be before the city council. Thank you. Other comments? Eric?
You know, I, I looked at this, and I'm usually pretty good at finding errors that Donovan might make. Um, I didn't find any in his memos. Um, I see this as a driveway, too. To, to me, this is a obvious driveway. It, and quite frankly, I don't think it looks good. And, and I don't normally say that about plans, um, that people bring forward and things that people do. But you've got, you've got like a, a foot or, I don't know how, how long it is on, on the left side of this driveway, and I'm going to call it that because that's what I think it is, where it's dirt and whatever else that you've rooted water to go pushing towards the street there. Probably going to dig that up. And then on the other side, it's like a crooked V. The, the thing looks ridiculous, but it looks like it was built for the intent to park vehicles on. And I can only imagine the part that's going down between these two houses is probably not to move a fish house, probably not to build the shed that exceeds your impervious surface. It's probably so that you can drive four-wheelers down it, or snowmobiles, or have other access down to the lake. I don't know. But what I do want to tell the other commissioners here, um, I did receive a complaint, actually before we even got our packets, um, when the, the public notice went out, from another neighbor that didn't even want to show up here, that didn't like this. So, not every neighbor is happy about this plan here. Um, but I think what this contractor did is led these property owners down a pathway that, oh, here, we'll fix this problem, but ignored all the rules and the regulations that are set in place for the city. And a lot of these have good value. The, the, the points Mr. Black just made about the five-foot setback on the side, it has value. The reason why there is only so much driveway you have in front of your house has value. And to have a contractor that came out and just absolutely disregarded you, um, I think you guys are taking your case to the wrong person. The, the city isn't who you should be complaining to. It's the contractor. Um, and so I'm going to absolutely stand up for our city, um, staff today and call this a driveway, which is what they're asking us to do. Um, it goes up to the road. It can park cars. It's designed to be a driveway. To me, it fits no other purpose. And quite frankly, I was very open to hearing anything tonight that might tell me otherwise, and I'm not hearing it. And quite frankly, I don't know that you guys are being all completely honest. Um... And I live on a lake, too. I don't live on the big forest lake. But I'll tell you what. I don't have any interest in putting a concrete pad between the driveways of my home and my neighbor's home to sit and talk in the front yard. You live on a lake, you go sit and talk in the backyard on the lake. It doesn't make sense. The story doesn't make sense. If, if there was a rational reason to control erosion from the front of your property all the way to the back, then why aren't you fighting the five-foot setback from the road, or the eight-and-a-half-foot setback from the road?
Can I address that?
Mr. Chair?
No. We, we, we're done hearing you, as far as I'm concerned. So, unless the rest of the commission wants to, here, um, we've, we've heard from you, and we didn't have to tonight. We granted that opportunity. Um, so, I, I'm ready to make, make a motion when other members up here are, but I am no question calling this thing a driveway, and I'm open to hearing other reasons that we should add to the, uh, finding the fact that our city attorney has put together.
Hannah?
Mr. Chair, I just have two comments. Uh, one, um, I've worked with Mr. Hannah before, and, um, you know, he's a very reputable contractor. I would just like to say that. And he does very good work. So, Mr. Hannah, I, you know, you did great, you did good work. I, I don't think, I don't think the work was bad. I, I think he did what he was instructed to do. That's just my, uh, maybe they talked about options, but I just, I'd like to say that. He does a great job. I've known him. I've done a lot of stuff with him. But I would like to address what I talked about earlier. And this is one of the reasons why I'm in favor of, of what the city is saying, is, is, is there some problems there? The, the biggest problems are, you have utilities on one side of that house that have to have access to them. In order for someone to come in and replace that gas meter line, or the gas meter, or fix the electric, or work on the, on the cable, that's all on the one side of the house, the only way they're getting to that is now digging up and breaking up your concrete to get there. That, that is a problem. You need to have, be aware of those easements that utility companies have to your property. They have that by the rules. You've, you've now created encroachments on two properties by doing this without sitting down and going through the proper channels. That's the other issue. And the biggest issue I see is a safety issue. Concrete is very slippery. And even though water's going to run down this, you're not going to walk down this when water's running down this because it's going to be slippery, especially at the steep grade you said it is. And in the wintertime, when that gets icy, it's going to be even slipperier. This is a real problem, and I, I think you, you could have done many other things to, to, to enhance and to prevent this water problem. It's, it's, it's nice, but you could have, you could have done, I think, a million different things to make this a better, better, better fix.
Dan?
I don't, I'm not going to repeat what I've said previously, but I, I'd like to underscore the notion that there are other alternative, there are other much more attractive alternatives, probably less expensive alternatives than a six-inch reinforced concrete slab installed at a forty-degree angle. I, I'm just, um, I'm still trying to get my arms around why that seemed to be the only solution to this. Um, with, why not put a set of steps down there? I mean, if you're going to buy all this concrete, put a set of steps in there so that you can walk down there, so it's safe. I mean, we've created something here that, you know, potentially seven months out of the year is not going to be safe to go near. And I realize that's not our problem, and it's not, it's not our issue, but it, I, I, somehow, we've got to, we have to do something with our city ordinances to, to prohibit this sort of thing from coming up again. We absolutely do. Uh, and I'm in favor of that, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to support the, the city staff on this because I, I just, I, I believe that there were, there were serious errors made here that weren't the errors of the city.
Thank you. I, I would also concur to that. To me, this, this looks like a driveway, to me. So, I'm going to support the city on this also. Any other comments? Eric?
I, I think we have consensus to call it a driveway, but if we look on the packet that staff provided us at the table, is the resolution that you're looking for us to pass, correct, Donovan?
Correct.
And on item number one, we need to fill those out tonight, correct? You're not asking us to direct the attorney to draw that up?
No, no.
Okay.
No, this would be part of a motion if the, if the, you know, if the commissions, you know, make a motion to deny the appeal.
So, I think we have consensus here that we want to change the does slash does not to does. So, it says does constitute a driveway, and then we need to come up with reasons. And I don't think we're limited to three, if we want to write as many as we want. Um, for me, I, I scribbled down, it looks like a driveway. It's built to function like a driveway, and it's able to hold vehicles like a driveway. Um, if there's other things , um, somebody else would like to add, I'm ready to make that motion after I hear everybody else's ideas.
I concur.
Works for me.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve written findings of fact relating to an appeal of the decision of the Community Development Director regarding classification concrete surfaces as a driveway in determination that said driveway impermissibly encroaches on required setbacks. Drawing in that item number one on the bottom of page two states, "The planning commission finds the concrete installed on the owner's properties does constitute a driveway for the following reasons: It looks like a driveway. It's built to function like a driveway. And it's able to hold vehicles like a driveway." This is in relation to eleven twenty and eleven thirty-two Bay Drive Southeast.
I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstentions? Motion carries. So, what happens now is that if you disagree with the decision by the planning commission, you are welcome to appeal it to the city council. You have one, seven business day, or seven calendar days to, uh, inform them that you wish to appeal to this, and then they will make a determination at the city council level for the final decision. Can I answer any questions as far as that goes?
Is there a want to be an email, or?
Uh, Donovan, I think just an email...
Email to my, myself is, you know, can work.
If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Donovan. We want to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And we have moved to the always famous, most exciting part, the other part of our meeting. Uh, Donovan, what do you have for us?
Well, um, I'll say that we don't have a planning commission, um, meeting, um, on the twenty-fourth, but we will have one on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Some agenda items. Um, also, that Bailey has something she'd like to discuss.
Would you like to come to the lectern and?
I'm fine here.
Could you please stand?
Go ahead, Bailey.
Um, Donovan asked me to present this packet of photos that's at the dais. Um, these photos were taken by some community members, um, to use as a cover for the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And we picked out some ones that are attractive. Um, these aren't the final photos. These are just kind of angles, ideas. We're just looking for feedback on, uh, what you would like to see, um, in the future, and they can take some more if any of these are sufficient.
Well, I got to get the vertical worked out on them. They're distorted.
Yeah, yeah. So, what, what, yeah, no, what we're looking for, I mean, those are, there's, there's Photoshop stitched together, um, you know, seriously.
They made it fit.
The drone shot, I know.
It's real easy.
Um, but really, it's, it's, it's the council, you know, wanted, commissioners wanted, you know, a better comp plan cover photo, and, uh, we had some, some good volunteers.
Well, we didn't want to show stuff that's not in our city anymore. I like second one and third one personally, but...
You don't want to know the number of staff hours it took to make them look the way that they do now.
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, I like the last page.
I like two and five.
I like the way it goes all the way back to the freeway there. Shows all of the...
Two and five.
Five is...
I'm going to get one.
They're in your email.
Are they? Okay.
Two and five.
So, is consensus that you'd like to see better angles of two and five, or, um, pictures as is, just less distorted?
No, just make sure that the vertical, you know, that they don't scrunch it to make it fit, you know, just...
So it distorts it, yeah.
No, I want a, I want a spherical water tower. I don't want an egg-shaped water tower.
Asking a lot.
If you're looking for a preference, I like two over five. Um, I think, I think our comprehensive plan, a, a common person that will look at it is a developer that's coming into the city to understand what Forest Lake is about. And I think the picture in two shows a larger, more vibrant downtown than five does. I think five kind of makes it look like we have this small little downtown and maybe not as appealing. So, if you were looking for a preference on either of those two, between those two, that would be mine.
To retake the picture after that, what is it?
Three.
Fourth street, the one that's still mud next to Lighthouse Lot? Wait until that's paid.
Well, that can be Photoshop. Somebody can Photoshop that in. But, you know, if you did want to use both of them, and you wanted to make, uh, the north-south oriented one better, it, it should be higher and, and, you know, pointed down a little bit more.
Can we go four feet, four feet high with this drone?
Well, no, you don't need to do that. But just, that would, that would make the downtown area look a little bit bigger. Right now, it, it looks that, it's just, you know, that new building just kind of dwarfs everything else, you know, and it gives you a kind of an, an unrealistic view.
Are you, are you talking about two or?
Five.
Five.
The one, or, is, see, one, see, two, three, four, five. Oh, I'm sorry. You're, we're not even, we're not even talking about four, are we? Okay, yeah, I don't think...
You're only four guys, so go away.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
You're voted off, yeah.
No, no, yeah. No, that's, that's why I didn't, I mean, it, it's an intriguing angle because it shows both lakes, but it, it, it definitely distorts the downtown area.
I don't, I don't mind either two or five. The thing I like about five is not so much what's in the foreground, but the background. I think we, we get, I think five is higher up, so we see that background.
You're right.
Down by thirty-five a little closer. I like what's in the foreground of...
That's number four.
I would just like a little higher so we see a little more of this in the background.
Oh, yeah, he's got the wrong, he's got the wrong one up there. Yeah. Which one, which number you, uh?
I like the foreground of two and, and then the mid, where you see more of the freeway kind of on five.
Oh, yeah, it's because it's a higher angle. Right, it's a higher angle. It's, they're higher up and shooting a, oh, actually, a sharper angle. Donovan?
And I'll make it clear that my wife does not let me select the Christmas picture.
I know it's late, but I just have one question, as long as we're in other, if you guys can indulge me. Donovan, do we have a rule, uh, as I drive up North Shore, because I live on North Shore, there's more and more signs in people's yards for in-house businesses, you know, uh, whatever it might be. There's at least four or five now about businesses in-house.
There's at least four or five now about businesses in-house.
Home occupations?
Yeah, I mean, do we have some rules in the residential neighborhoods about that?
We do, and there's a maximum size sign, and, you know, location requirements, like 10 feet from the front lot line, and they need to have a home occupation certificate of compliance, so, you know.
People are dropping off whatever, computers or whatever, they're supposed to have some sort of a permit for that.
Correct.
Okay, are you aware that, have you been down North Shore lately, and have you seen those, and are you aware if we have those on file? I'm just curious.
Well, you know, I do recall the, the computer one, and I've, you know, I've, we were fine with compliance with that, and I don't know if the guy doesn't check his emails or something, but.
Okay.
That's a joke.
Yeah, I understand.
But, no, and short of.
Short of ratcheting up the enforcement, I let that one, that one lie. But, you know, I can, I can pursue that one again.
No, I was just curious, because I see more of them, and I'm thinking, gee, maybe I should throw a sign out there. What can I do, work out of the house doing? I don't know, anybody got any ideas?
No, we don't want you to.
I work out of my house, but I just have my, I just have my address on my mailbox, that's all I.
Yeah, that's all you need. The planning commissioner, yeah, I can do that.
Any, any other reasonable business to come to the floor?
I got one. What's, since we had this problem tonight with the driveway and stuff.
I have my preference.
Gentlemen? What's the next, since we had a problem tonight with a driveway slash concrete space, open space, whatever, what's our, what's our, what's our, our next step to maybe get the city, the council, to get that in writing, that driveways now should have to have, get a permit, and then get it inspected? I mean, even.
Isn't it surprising that they don't have to have a permit?
Since we don't have that.
It, it's surprising to me, but it's also surprising that.
I think we need to get that in there.
These kind of issues arise only seldomly.
Well, that's.
No, no, we don't want to. This is the worst case, I mean, you can imagine.
We don't need a whole bunch of new rules either, I mean, I don't necessarily favor that.
No, but everybody thought we had, everyone here thought we had to have a permit to get a driveway. Is there anybody here that did not think we needed a permit to get a driveway put in? Okay, so even though it's not on the books, I'll bet you everybody in the city probably thought you had a permit. When I had my driveway done four or five years ago, my cement man said, you know, with my price, you know, we'll get, we'll pull all the permits needed and stuff, and. But I, I bet you we needed a permit for that N5 feet, though, right?
No, no, I mean, actually, the comprehensive right-of-way ordinance, which was just adopted on Monday night, does allow private driveways as a permissible, you know, encroachment upon the public right-of-way.
Because I did have to check with the city, because I put in a new concrete apron at the bottom, and that had to meet city specs.
Yeah, there, there is, yes, certainly, I mean, there's.
They had that little lip and stuff, so, okay.
There's standard detail plates that we do give contractors when they're like for, you know, curb nose downs and.
Right.
And slope, and you know how they tie in, encourage them not to touch the city asphalt, and, but, you know, there's street opening permits if they do, you know, impact city asphalt.
Okay.
And there's escrow that needs to be deposited.
Is that something we bring up to the city council, or, or is that something you bring up to the city council, that maybe we should get something in our books, so this does not happen, happen again?
First, yeah, there's, there's a couple, couple things going on. I mean, one would be to simply bring it up as a workshop discussion item with the council. Second is that there is some movement afoot to, you know, amend the, the city fee, fee schedule, and it could be, that would be the place to insert, you know, a cost for that, and then, you know, then we get, you know, then we have it. But it would be also the, a policy decision to, you know, adopt that, and then, you know, what sort of standards, or have an application as well.
Because I have a feeling they're going to not support our decision tonight and go to the city council.
They will, so, yeah, they will, I'm sure.
Eric? I hate to say it, but even if the city council puts in your suggestion, these people don't see it as a driveway, so they wouldn't have filled out a permit anyhow.
It was a driveway when they put it in, I'm sure.
We agree.
You don't pour six inches with rebar.
Around the same page.
To put a, a planter with tomatoes and cucumbers in it. And then a place where we can meet and gather at night when I live on the lake. I had that all in my notes.
Donovan, do you, uh?
Can I say one other thing, as long as we're kind of red on the same topic? And I want Donovan to make sure to hear this.
Can I ask my question?
Sure, you can, because you're the chairman.
Are you sure? Is this, we've, we've, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Yes, do we need a permit for a patio, concrete patio?
No.
And the reason I asked it, I'm more, I don't care if we need a permit or not, I'm more concerned about impervious.
Oh, for you, I'm sorry, I wasn't, later a lot, you mean your, your personal residence?
No, I just mean in general.
If it's on the lake, you. No, no.
On the lake, you do?
Well, on the lake, you have to be aware of the impervious. Impervious, but there is also, if it's a side, there's side setback issues, you can only encroach upon a side setback three feet with a walkway.
Yeah, well, you go put a patio on your, what I'm trying to say is, how do we eliminate people just putting patios in their, on their houses without encroaching, without some kind of a permit?
That would, you know, that would be some sort of, maybe it's an impervious permit.
Because you need one for a deck, regardless of what you build.
A deck being a structure, and there's building code requirements then, but basically, if it's under, I believe it's 18 inches, the building code, even like for a deck, the building code doesn't apply, so you can do kind of, you know, low wooden planked areas that don't require a building permit.
They're not attached, or is that why?
Yeah, if, yeah, I think they have to not be attached as well, correct.
Because we get all these weekend warriors out there, building patios, and decks, and sheds, and it all happens, I, I, I see it every day at work. Come Monday morning, there's a new shed up, there's a new driveway, there's a new, it's, it's all over. And it's not just this city, it's like in Stillwater where I work. But that's what the, that's what people do on the weekends, you know, they're, they're off work, they put in a new driveway, or a shed slab, or what sidewalk, you know, but I think it should be, that should be a little more regulated, even if it's just, you just come in and pull out a permit, it might be a free permit, but just so they know the rules and regulations.
Education permit.
A permission permit, yeah, something like that, and then they get it inspected afterwards. But they have to ask, you know, like, to get the rules and regulations.
Oh, certainly, I mean, we have, we have banner permits that are free, that are required for commercial businesses, put that temporary banner. So, I mean, there is precedent for what, you know, some, that sort of permitting process.
Just a start, because of what happened here tonight, that's all.
Eric, you had a question?
Well, in relation to that, yeah, we were talking about last night, I, I would like to, because I sort of have a little, two missions. One, one is to, to find products that use recycled plastic, that people can use and that, that solve problems where otherwise other materials might be used. And, and, and secondly, to see if there's ways where developers can use different materials to avoid building more ponds that interfere with wetlands and, and become a maintenance item. But the, the product that, that we were showing, and we're looking at at the church is, is a permeable plastic grid that you put down instead of asphalt, and you fill it with gravel, and it, and it seeps through instead of runs off. And so it takes care of draining problems, and it's something that could have easily been used in this case to, to solve that problem.
But it's not new, it's been around for 20 years. We've got it done in Stillwater, all along the river. When they put this bridge path in over here, it's on all the sides, on both sides.
But nobody, nobody literally, I think it's up by Cherrywood Point, right along the trail as well, and they put grass over the top of it, but, but very, it never comes up as a erosion solution versus a pond. Pond is always in the, in the equation, and maybe it's education, maybe it's, maybe I'm off base, but it, it seems like, like it's something that should, should be encouraged by the city, and, and I did show it to Ryan, and, and of course, he was familiar with it in some cases, and I understand there's a park, parking lot over in Blaine that did the whole parking lot with that material. And, and it's been there a couple of years, and it works good, but anyway, let's hope it works.
Thank you. Anything else? Chair entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Motion carries.